Call the City Council meeting to order. Will a clerk please call the roll?
I'm here.
Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Okay, the first item is council comments. And if I can just mention one or two things. I note with some sadness that again this year, as always, the county executives awards for excellence in the arts and humanities are on a Monday night. It's always on a Monday night. We can never go to that. And one of our residents is getting an award, the community award, Joel Snyder, who's president of Audio Description Associates. And he has a worldwide reputation for his excellent work. And sorry that we won't be able to be there and honor him. And also note that coming up this Saturday from 11 to 2 here is Tacoma Park Arts and Humanities Day. And there are a number of people who are going to be performing, including the, I think, I saw Liz Lerman Dance Exchange and the Washington National Opera. So there'll be workshops, demonstrations, and performances. And it's a wonderful day. And I just also wanted to mention again the wonderful event that we had last Wednesday, I think. Piney Branch Elementary School, which was International Walk to School Day. There were about 550 of us walking from down Maple Avenue to Piney Branch School next door. It was a great morning. I think next year they're talking about having a little longer walk, finding a location that's farther away so everybody can walk a little longer. And that would be good for all of us. And looking forward to that event again next year. Other council comments? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that I did have the opportunity to attend with my wife Joyce the art opening in the senior room this last Saturday. And it was a great event, and it's also beautiful art. And I encourage people to stop by the senior room and take a look at that. I also wanted to thank the Tacoma Park Community Action Group for the many people that they registered to vote over this last week. And we turned those registrations in today. And so now the next step is for everyone to go out and vote on Election Day. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Competing event on Saturday is the tree planting along New Hampshire Avenue from 9 to 12. And so it's not truly competing because the Arts and Humanities event here doesn't start until 11:00. So you can fit in a little tree planting along New Hampshire Avenue and then come back here. I have a continuing interest in reducing our energy use in the city and citywide, and I'm happy to be considering some meetings along those lines with the Director of Public Works, Ms. Braithwaite. And I look forward to talking more about that in the future weeks.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. Sorry I missed last week.
If I can say, welcome back to both you and Councilmember Robinson. We were not at full strength last week.
Oh, sorry about that.
You missed me.
Someone at work fed me something called a muscatall or some kind of a grape. And I ate two of them, which isn't very many, but I'm apparently really, really allergic to them. So, sorry about that. Had a good free day off of work. It's a couple of things. Tacoma Park Newsletter. While I'm thinking about it, while I'm making this other statement, I understand from some folks who live in condos that they claim that they don't get the newsletter. Do we send it to everybody in the city? People at 116 Lee don't get their newsletter. I know that's in Ward 3, but I have friends that live there and they say they're not getting their newsletter. And I think a couple of times, some of the people who live in the rental housing along Flower Avenue have said that they're not getting their newsletter, which makes me wonder if it's the mail person, because I know I also had that issue with one of my constituents who said that apparently their street isn't assigned to a regular route and they get a different mail person every day and they never get the newsletter either because the mail people don't deliver it. So maybe it's more of an education project with the mail people. The other thing is that there was an article about the strategic plan, which I really appreciated because I'm a big supporter of the strategic plan. And in the strategic plan, it wrote about some, quoted me about, you know, the way it was characterized is what I blamed is the impediments to getting a strategic plan out. And I just wanted to put out there that I wouldn't characterize my comments as blame. The question was what I thought were some of the impediments to us doing a strategic plan. And I think that this has been kind of an emerging idea over the last couple of years. We've been pulling together. I think it's a long process. It involves a lot of people. And I think that it is also reflective of the changing dynamics about how we work together as a council and how we work together with the city and different ideas about what it means to be in a city manager council form of government, which I all think is good. But I don't think of it as blame. And so when I saw that, I sort of cringed a little bit. Oh, I'm not blaming anybody. It's just structural. Okay. Bamboo. The three years that I've been City Council member, I think at least once a month I come and talk about bamboo. And I know last month I asked if we couldn't just kind of deal with this one particular area of my ward and a particular property that suffers from invasive noxious weeds. And we all know who this is. And it continues. I have looked at it. It is terrible. It is like an onslaught of every kind of invasive vine you can imagine on top of the bamboo coming from another property. It continues again with a property along Ethan Allen in the 500 block, people not mowing their lawn. It's, you know, I think about the role of the city and neighbor-to-neighbor relations. I think we don't just kind of leave people out there to fight it out with their neighbors. We have powers. We have code enforcement. We have these things. And I understand that we don't want to just punitively go find people as much as we can kind of right off the bat to start with. And we like to work with the neighbors. But, you know, three years is a long time for this guy to suffer. And I have to tell you, his complaints are valid. It is really serious. To keep his own home from being invaded by the neighbors' weeds, he has to spend every weekend, all weekend long, trimming weeds. And it's unfair. We have the power to do something about it, and we need to take action. And so I guess what I would like to see is some sort of an action plan about how we're going to permanently resolve this issue. Birthing Center. The hospital plan came out, and it did not include a birthing center. And I know there was a lot of advocacy for a birthing center. I know I talked to the people about a birthing center. I know there's issues around midwives and doctors and things. But in general, you know, Maryland isn't too bad of a place to be able to operate a birthing center. It is fairly supportive. It could be much more supportive than it is. But I am definitely disappointed that there's not a birthing center included in the plan. And I think in addition to losing the full facility hospital, the other thing that we have clearly lost in the last couple of years was the Tacoma Park midwifery practice that was right in downtown. And it doesn't take a Health Services Analysis Committee to know that in addition to the hospital, the other big thing that we lost was this midwifery group and the birthing practices. Both of my kids were born at home. And I think you get better quality care for those folks who are suitable for midwifery care. It's less expensive than other kinds of care. A lot of times for people who are low income, who can't afford to pay a lot of the hospital match costs, it is, even without insurance support, it is a very affordable way to have a baby. And I think it is the kind of thing that I would hope that the council together, all seven of us, would make a statement that we support that and want to see that in the new hospital site and put that high up on the agenda for working with the Advenus. Two more items. WSSC thought it was wise to tear up both Sligo Creek Parkway and all of Flower Avenue, which has resolved a whole bunch of traffic calming issues in Long Branch, Sligo, and initiated several more. And the, one of the, the understanding from one of the neighbors is actually that they're having a hard time finishing off all of this work that they've done because of communication between WSSC and the hospital and working out of time to shut off the hospital water. I can't imagine how you could ever work out of time to shut off the hospital water. It seems like somewhere in the piping system, there must be a way to transfer from one side to another so that the hospital keeps its water going from, you know, a different directional source or something. But the word on the street is that there, we could use some support in connecting WSSC and the hospital to get communicating on this so that our own people don't have to suffer with half-water pressure as they have for the last six months. And finally, the elections are going to come to a close in 22 days or 21 days. I know that there are some people who on election night itself are going to be holding parties. But I wondered Tacoma Park, being the place that it is, if in fact the next night after we have more results in, if we might be planning for the potential for a big response from folks who want to gather and... No? You're not gathering?
I'm nonpartisan.
You're nonpartisan. I understand that. But I'm just saying that, you know, there could be quite a response. I think we should keep that in mind.
Either way.
Either way, there could be quite a response. Either way, yes, I am certainly not counting any chickens. I'm just saying that that's something to think about and keep in mind. I have not been in the Washington, DC area at the time of administrative changeover. So I don't know what happens. But people have been talking to me about it in my ward and they, they're telling me that it's a possibility. So... No?
Sure. What are you suggesting, Colleen?
Well, people have asked, one, if they thought that there would be such activity that, you know, streets might be clogged and there might be public safety issues. But other people have asked about having essentially street parties, that they would have street parties in the city and that they might be impromptu and not planned for.
So...
Welcome to the meeting, Mayor.
Hello.
That concludes my comments.
Okay.
If you want to talk about it, it's right here.
Okay. Councilmember Wright.
One I wanted to say, Mayor, I can't seem to find the mansionization issue work session on the agenda. Did it...
It's here.
Oh. What is it? So we can remind people. I know there are a lot of people who are interested in it. It couldn't...
It's... Yes, the 20th. It's called Discussion of Infill Development.
Ah, okay. Infill development on...
That's mansionization.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The second comment I wanted to make is about Maple Avenue. So on the 16th and 17th of this month, a couple of days, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, they're going to be working on Maple Avenue. And the street will be closed. It'll be closed from Tulip to Philadelphia, but they will let people coming out of Valley View, which is one way, exit down and go out Philadelphia. So people should be prepared for that. It's to repair a section of the road that has started to deteriorate because either the underpinnings of the road or a patch were done incorrectly. There is one speed bump that will be impacted. I know that there's a long history with the speed bumps on Maple Avenue. And I've been assured by the Public Works Director that as much as humanly possible, they will replace the speed bump as is in terms of its height and the angle of the bump. I know that's an issue for people. I just want to remind people they have to register to vote before tomorrow or by tomorrow. On the 18th, another event is also happening in Old Town. So so far we have Arts and Humanities Day, the tree planting. And there's also on the 18th at 9:00 AM, the Main Street Initiative, Sweep the Streets, Sweep the Streets, sorts of cleanup of Old Town. So I encourage people to come out for that on 9:00 AM if they can. Colleen made a comment that reminded me, I'd like if we could from the city manager get, not tonight, but an update on the houses basically that had, we considered to be more significant issue code enforcement violations. Because we came up with this great idea and we've started to implement it, which is to realize that, you know, yes, there may be random code enforcement items here or there, but there are frequently particular houses that are having ongoing issues and they need a little bit more attention, probably a combination of code enforcement as well as maybe even in some cases more significant legal action. 36 Philadelphia, my favorite property, is one of those. But I know there's many other around the city. And then lastly, I'm also supportive of the idea of approaching the hospital about the birthing center. I think maybe we should either start with a letter and ask them, some official correspondence to ask them where they're at on that idea and then potentially can pass a resolution as well.
Yes.
I would just comment that I agree on the birthing center. And I'm not sure that it was precluded. By the way, the vision of the hospital was presented to the public. Because the birthing center, I think, would be a nonprofit organization, they did leave some room there. But I do agree that it should be explicit.
I'm not sure that they entirely envision as a, only a nonprofit activity. I think there's different, there's different models to run it. It could be part of the hospital's operations. It could be a nonprofit organization. But I think if it's not in the plan, it's not being talked about, so...
I think we can follow, I think it was Councilmember Wright's suggestion or somebody to start with you. I don't know, to start with a letter and follow up from there. Are there any more council comments whom will move along to? There's one agenda item to note, which is that Councilmember Siemens has asked that Consent Agenda Item C be pulled from the consent agenda, and we will deal with that one after we deal with the consent agenda. And then just a quick scheduling update and reminder that Councilmember Elrich starts the County Council Member Parade tonight. We have Councilmember Irvin next week. And then two weeks after that, November 3rd, Councilmember Leventhal will be here, all of them to provide us with their comments and answer any questions we have about what's going on with the county. As was pointed out, next week is the discussion on infill development slash mansionization. And also, we'll be discussing city committees. The 27th, we will be having work session items discussing amendments to the ethics ordinance and a discussion regarding the placement of signs on public property. And the night before the election, Monday, November 3rd, we will have work session items on both the Purple Line and the Health Services Impact Committee research findings. So the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. And if there's anybody who'd like to make any comments, please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Pat Lovas, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. And again, I'd like to reiterate what the councilman and the mayor had said, that tomorrow, October 14th, is the final day to register to vote. Tomorrow is your final day to get up like a man and get up like a woman and show your stuff at Tacoma Park and the rest of the state. Get up there and register to vote. And also, today happens to be a holiday. And I don't know why. Because today is Columbus Day. And I, people don't know that Columbus is not the nicest person to have a holiday for. I think today we should be a day to remember what we've done to the Native Americans and what we've done to the land that we've stolen away from the Native Americans. We should never, our holiday should be for people that we want our children to look up to. I would not appreciate it if kids were coming up and telling me they want to be like Columbus when they grow up. Because what Columbus did, he mistreated his shipmates. You know, back in those days, he mistreated them. He cut the ears and noses off of some of them and done some other public mutilations. He's also done that to the Indians whom he had enslaved. He had enslaved his captives. And much to their surprise, because they had showed him what foods to eat, what they could do to survive. They welcomed the Europeans with open arms. And he came in and he took all the gold, everything he could find. And he even enslaved the Indians to mine the gold. If not, they're tortured and tortured bad. And I do not wish to think of today as a day that we want to honor a thug. Nothing but a thug. We would not honor a gangster out here on Maple Avenue. We do not honor the mafia. We do not honor your local drug dealer or the crack man. We do not honor those people. Those people are criminals, much the same way Christopher Columbus, back in his day, was a criminal, nothing but a terrorist. He terrorized his crew, he terrorized his passengers, and he terrorized the Indians. Today, I think, should be a day we should remember what we have done to the Indians, what we have done to the land, what we continue to do to other people throughout the world, the Iraqis, the Afghans, the Pakistanis, the Blacks, the gays. We should remember what we are doing to people we look at as less than human, because they are not less than human. We are equal, and today should be a day we should remember that and not consider it a holiday for Christopher Columbus. He is nothing but a thug. Okay, now come on, everybody, out and register to vote. You've got 21 days from tomorrow to register to vote, and tomorrow is your last day to register. Tomorrow, three weeks from now, 21 days, come on out and vote. Take part in this historic election. And please, don't think of today as a holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder if the city could somehow make a resolution for that, you know, that we, Tacoma Park, will not honor a thug. Is that possible? Thank you.
Hi, Steve Davies. I'm, I live at 6717 Poplar Avenue in the Circle Woods neighborhood. And I'm here tonight to present you all with a letter, actually, it's to Mayor Williams in particular, requesting that the city council schedule a work session as soon as possible on the topic of gas-powered leaf blowers. Seth Grimes and I were joined by about 30 other environmental professionals and activists in signing this letter. And I'll just read from the letter here. "These devices rely on remarkably inefficient two-cycle gas-oil engines whose loud whine can be heard for blocks. But as annoying as the noise is, it is the machine's contribution to air pollution that leads us to conclude the city should ban them." Montgomery County Executive Ike Leggett has recognized that gasoline-powered lawn care equipment is a significant contributor of ozone-causing pollutants, including volatile organic compounds and nitrogen oxides. A county pamphlet says these pollutants have negative health effects, and VOCs and NOCs are the primary contributors to the formation of ground-level ozone, a key component of smog. Ground-level ozone is a particular problem in this region. A number of studies have documented the negative impact of ozone on all types of vegetation, including trees, and on the wildlife that use the plants for food, shelter, and breeding. Conversely, I am not aware of any studies that show that these machines are actually more efficient than a good old rake. There are a couple of, a couple of things have just happened recently that make this a very opportune time to address this issue. One is, well, they're both recently promulgated federal rules. One requiring the DC metropolitan area significantly reduce harmful ozone levels and all other metropolitan areas, it's a national rule, and that manufacturers reduce emissions from small engines such as leaf blowers. That second rule in particular, I believe, offers a perfect opportunity to get people to switch to alternative methods of lawn care. If I may, I'd just like to read the names of these folks who have signed the letter, in addition to myself and Seth Grimes. Wendy Bell, Margaret Bowman, Franco Brilliant, Paul Krostowski, Jim Epstein, Melanie Fosnot, Phil Friend, Susan Harris, Ann Hoffner, Pat Howell, Bill Hutchins, Satjiven Eichelkolsa. May I continue?
Sure.
Marty Itner, Joseph Klockner, Peter Lane, Diane McKeachern, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Pete Mara, Alden Meyer, Brenda Platt, Dick Rice, Scott Shang, Bruce Sidwell, Greg Smith, Eileen Sobek, Mike Tabor, Betsy Taylor, Mike Tidwell, Dave Tilford, Monique Tilford, and Chris Victoria. If I may just make three very, very brief points, I think another reason this is an opportune time to deal with this issue is because the council and mayor are discussing priorities for the city. One of the words you guys are using is livability. You also want to reduce the energy footprint. I think banning these machines would be a great first step towards that. These, ozone has very severe health effects. A National Academy of Sciences report that came out earlier this year, in releasing it in April, the academy said in a press release, "Short-term exposure to current levels of ozone in many areas is likely to contribute to premature deaths," says a new National Research Council report, which adds that "the evidence is strong enough that the US EPA should include ozone-related mortality in health benefit analyses related to future ozone standards." Just one other quote from Dr. Ellis Cowling of North Carolina State University. He was commenting on an EPA staff paper that was prepared for their ozone rule on the effects of vegetation. "Ozone and other oxidants cause stress in plants and thus predispose both individual plants and whole ecosystems to attack by natural enemies that include disease and injury-inducing bacteria, fungi, nematodes, viruses, and insects. In some cases, exposure to high concentrations of ozone also decreases the resistance of plants to injury and damage by abiotic stress factors such as drought and frost." I hope you can see your way clear to scheduling a work session as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
And Jesse, do you have a, did you get a copy to them or do you want me to? I can, I'll just distribute it.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make any comments? Seeing none, the next item is the city manager's comments.
Just a few quick items this evening. As the council may recall, TRG Construction, who was the contractor for Phase 2 of the community center, had filed suit against the city regarding our assessment of liquidated damages. On Friday, there was a status hearing before the Circuit Court. On Friday, there was a status hearing before the circuit court. The city had filed an objection to their complaint as they had not gone through the required contractual procedures, which included mediation and arbitration. The circuit court did dismiss TRG's complaint without prejudice, and it appears at this time that an arbitration date has been set for May twelfth through fifteenth, two thousand and nine. So, there won't be a lot to tell you about on this front until next year. Earlier today, I had the occasion to talk to Eris Coleman, who you may recall is with Clifton Gunderson, the city's financial auditors. I will be meeting with her on Friday as part of the required procedures. They do interview me to determine if there's any knowledge I have of fraud or other issues, and I'll also be getting a preliminary briefing on the outcome of the audit, which is scheduled to be presented to the council, I believe it's November twenty-fourth. Ms. Coleman did want me to remind the council, as they shared with you last fall, both in writing and in their presentation, that they are available to meet with the council at any time, should you have any issues that you'd like to discuss with them. I had previously provided the council with Ms. Coleman's contact information, but if any council member does have interest in speaking to her, I can certainly send that to you again. Also, I wanted to give the council an update on the Revenue Sharing Task Force, which is very timely since Councilmember Elrich is here. As the council may recall, we have been, we being the municipal representatives, have been patiently and now not so patiently waiting to get a draft from the county representatives. The last information that I heard was that we should receive a draft of the report from them towards the end of this week. The process would be then for the municipal reps to review those areas where there appear to be agreement, and certainly to provide our written comments to those areas where we're in disagreement with the county position. So, hopefully, we will be getting that report draft at the end of this week. I have suggested to my municipal colleagues that if that is not forthcoming, since it's been promised for some time, that it may be appropriate at this juncture to have the chapter president send a letter to the county executive expressing our concern about the delay. Hopefully, that will not be necessary, as we'll have a draft in our hands, but I'll certainly give the council an update next week. The last item I have is just to give the council an update on the auditorium project. We do need to issue a request for proposal for architectural services. We cannot, by our procurement code, just enter into a contract with MTFA for the subsequent phases of this process. I have retained Sharon Consulting, which some of you may recall was the construction management firm that we worked with on the community center project to provide some technical assistance in the drafting of that RFP. We've been exchanging drafts for about the last week, and I expect that the RFP will be out on the street on Monday, October twentieth, if not a day or so before that. Our goal is to basically have a contract before the council, probably in late November, before you go on recess. So, that's all I have to report, unless there's questions about any items.
That's what I see.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. Since Councilmember Elrich is in the room, I think we should let him know that this is, I think, the third time he reported to us that the draft is coming next week, and that has come over several months of conversations.
We had originally been hopeful we would get a draft sometime during the month of August.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we will, thank you for that report, and we'll move along to the update from County Councilmember Mark Elrich. Welcome back. And I had to say, I think we'll let you do that. I had to say I had to smile when Councilmember Wright was talking about the upcoming little modification on Maple Avenue and the speed bumps on Maple Avenue and the concerns about replacing them in kind, and it reminded me of when you were up here and we had to consider redoing Maple Avenue and the speed bumps and how they would go back and...
When we were designing the speed bumps on the diet, something, we decided to proper width and height and, yeah, it was a lot of fun.
And your satisfaction or dissatisfaction with that process?
Some dissatisfaction.
Some dissatisfaction in a damaged car?
Yes. I've actually learned, I think they're sinking, and so I've learned for the ones that are sinking, that I go over and lift my muffler roughly over to the lowest part of the speed bump, and it allows me to not have to come to a dead stop when I get to the speed bumps there.
So you can go faster over them, is what you're saying?
I can go the speed limit, I can go the approved speed limit for a speed limit over, for a speed bump over them, which is faster than being at a dead stop and crawling over. They are the worst speed bumps I think I've encountered at all in Montgomery County, and different than many other in the city. They were always my favorites. So, I wanted to just talk about a few things that have, that I think have come up and probably of interest to you. The first is that I will pay a lot of attention to what's coming out in the way of report on the rebate system, because my view hasn't changed any from when I was sitting up there, which is basically the rebate system isn't fair, it needs to be based on formulas, everybody should understand it, it should be equitable, and I didn't think that the system that we were operating on before many of those tests, and just because I'm in Rockville doesn't mean that I've had a brain transplant and that I now think that everything is fine. So, I get that there's a problem, and it's an ongoing problem. I can't speak for the executive, but I can assure you that there's just a large, a great deal of consternation at the executive level because of the budget right now. I mean, everything we do is going to have budget implications, and how you resolve the municipal task force has budget implications, and I don't think anybody wants to take on more things that have budget implications, given what looks like is ahead of us. I don't know if you've had the benefit of a briefing from the state, but we did get a briefing from the state at the council a couple of weeks ago, and they came down and said that it's at least a $450 million problem and likely a billion-dollar problem. And of course, this is without slots. And so if you know anything about slots revenue, which is like a year or two off if you get it, that doesn't even close the gap that's sitting out there right now. So O'Malley's proposing major cuts in the existing budget, and then there will be another wave of cuts after this, and it looks like, I mean, the executive's doing the same thing for the county. We have to trim at least $250 million off the county's budget, and we have to do that without knowing what the state might do. And in the middle of our budget discussions, the state will make some decisions, and if they, for example, roll the teacher pensions back on the county, that's either a $16 million bite or a hundred-some million dollar bite that we're not prepared at all to take.
And Mark, how big is the entire budget at the county?
Four-point-one billion, give or take a hundred and two million.
Okay, so, so, you said 250 million?
Yeah. That's a big cut, you know, because we're like the city, you know, most of your costs are personnel costs, so when you go to cut things, you're cutting not just people, because then you're cutting programs. And I've been pushing really, really hard for consolidating some departments. So, for example, we're looking right now at the recreation functions that are housed in the recreation department and in park and planning, and those make sense to put them together. I've asked them to look at economic development functions, which are now housed in two different departments, that they belong in one, and we have housing programs operated out of three different departments, and should those things be consolidated into one or two, if you make one strictly a construction function and one a programmatic function? But we're trying to find ways, and I'm pushing very hard also to bring in outside consultants. And one thing I've learned in looking at what's going on in Rockville, in Health and Human Services, they have something like 170 vacancies, give or take a couple of people. And so if you're the manager of that department, you're being asked to manage a department with 170 vacancies, deliver the programs, figure out how to move people around, come up with next year's budget, and by the way, could you take a look at the operations of your department and figure out if there's a way to reorganize it? I just think that's too much for a person to do under circumstances like that. It's hard enough to manage a department, it becomes harder when you've got a lot of problems in terms of staffing levels, which are decisions we consciously made in order to control the budget, but then to ask that person to step back and look at reorganization possibility, I think they need some outside assistance. And so I would like the county to bring in some outside assistance, like on enterprise architects, and basically not tell us what we should be doing, but look at what we're doing and tell us whether we're doing it as efficiently as we could be doing it. So that's one of my hopes for the coming year in Rockville. And that's going to take some time, that's not something he can fix by the time we do the next budget. So, we are going to be in a cycle, I think, of making the county government a little bit leaner, but hopefully not losing the effect in this, in the scope of what it is we try to do. You've mentioned a couple of things tonight that were also of interest. I met with Washington Venice Hospital representatives today, and oddly enough, the birthing center came up, because I asked them about it, and I wanted to know what their plans were. They said they're committed to some kind of prenatal facility, because they've had that, they have that already, and that they are meeting, and I don't remember the woman's name who they're meeting with, but they're meeting with somebody specifically to talk about, you know, what a birthing center might mean, what the implications would mean for the campus. So, they have not dismissed it, and it's not, not in their plans, they just haven't fleshed the plans out to that level that they've made a decision about the birthing center. But that is something that he was more than willing to talk about, and it was definitely on his radar, so whoever's been talking to him, you've managed to land that on his radar. And a few people put it on my radar, which is why I asked him about it. So that's kind of, I think that's in process, at least talking about it's in process.
I think we're all asking. I asked, talked to Jerry about it, too.
I think the more of us that talk about it, the more likely we are to get it. He also talked a bit about the urgent care center, and there's state legislation and a court case moving forward, which would allow them to do an urgent care center, but they also are interested in doing as full a service center as they can possibly do, as close to an emergency room as they can possibly do. This is not a decision that they can make. This is a decision that depends on state law changes, the regulations coming from the state, and apparently the favorable disposition of a court case. But they are committed, as far as I can tell, to providing as close to an emergency room setting down here as they can get, and I thought that was good news for the community, because I think that was one of the largest concerns about the moving of the hospital, would have been the loss of the emergency room. I met a couple of weeks ago with Mary Kendall and Chief Akouchi, and we talked about Langley Park and the joint project down there, the CCafe operation, and I thought it was a very good discussion. It was my first time to actually sit down with the chief, and I thought it was very helpful to have that discussion. So, I was both impressed by the level of cooperation they seem to be getting with Montgomery County and their interactions, but also with the work that Mary's doing and the effort to try to get all the players in Langley Park to the table to work and talk about the same kind of issues and work in a coordinated way. So I thought it was pretty good. And he talked about mansionization, and funny you should mention that, because we were considering the mansionization bill for the county in the Fed Committee today. And as you, I think you all know, Roger Berliner has a bill for the county, and it's, he worked very hard to get the other kind of a citizen, developer, environmental committee, and they've come up with a bill, and it was going through the Fed Committee as the first step toward getting it to the council, and I thought we were pretty supportive of most of what the committee's recommended, and I imagine the city would have the option of either opting into or opting out of what the county does. You should probably pay really close attention to what's being patched up there.
That's, that's why our timing is what it is.
Good. I thought, you know, I thought it was pretty good. I probably would have been a little bit more restrictive. I think in, in the larger lots, the numbers they're working on makes sense, but when almost all your lots are between five and six thousand square feet, some of the lot size coverages that they're allowing might be, might seem a little bit large down here. And other jurisdictions are taking a different approach. Some use in it what's called an FAR, that they allow you to build a certain floor area ratio in the lot. Others try to deal with it with lot coverage and height restrictions, and Roger's bill deals with it in terms of lot coverage and height restrictions. So, that's, your timing will work really, really well with our timing.
And, and when will it likely come to a conclusion with your process?
Mike said he's going to put it back on the agenda for committee in two weeks, so if we resolve all the questions two weeks from now, then it should go to the council before December recess, should hit us in November.
Okay.
And I'd expect that should, you know, if it gets through the committee, it should probably get through the council okay.
In that process, Mark, is there, so you, you know, there's a hard and fast number, but is there any appeal process to look at special cases where sometimes the hard and fast number just doesn't?
No, I mean, this is, I mean, you can appeal somebody's building permit, but this is pretty straightforward in terms of determining what you're allowed to do on a property. And, I mean, like I said, this is, I would probably be a little bit tighter than they are, but it's the simplest process, and one thing we're trying to do is create processes that don't involve additional, a lot of additional work hours and people, because we are ill-equipped to deal with that. A couple of other things of, that's something, you know, enjoy, you know, support from this council on, is I've got a forest conservation bill, which is making its way through the county, and we're basically proposing a law that would get us as close to no net loss of forest as we can when it comes to developments on lots greater than 40,000 square feet, which doesn't affect a lot of lots in Tacoma Park. It may not affect any lots in Tacoma Park, but it primarily deals with a lot of the lots in the up county. And it's an effort, basically requires developers, builders, when they put on additions or when they want to build a new house on an empty lot, that they meet higher reforestation requirements. And we've worked, again, very hard with the Citizens Committee, we worked with Park and Planning, we differ on a couple of points with Park and Planning. So there's the Park and Planning version of the bill, and then I've attached amendments to places where I wanted it to be stronger than Park and Plannings. Both the council governments and the Governor O'Malley's task force in the environment have recommended moving toward no net loss of forest cover. I think it's Fairfax County actually is looking for a 5% gain in tree cover, so we're not exactly on the cutting edge. This would put us, I think, where we need to be regarding what the best scientific thinking is. And COG's conclusion was that forest conservation is both highly effective and one of the most cost-effective means of providing clean air and clean water.
And that's a growing edge, not a cutting edge?
That's, yes, but hopefully it'll be a growing edge. Right now, it's a, it's a cutting edge. The other project I'm working on, I've talked with some of you who saw my presentation, that was, it was Waco, Otra, and what's the?
And Victory Tower.
And, yes, Victory Tower. My office is working on a proposal to build a large bus rapid transit network in the county using median strips and right-of-ways. We've looked at about 100 miles, where we've identified places we think that you could put in a serious bus rapid transit system. We are, I think, as everybody recognizes, one, running out of places to foot roads, our traffic conditions aren't getting any better, and you could add to that that the fuel costs are soaring and people are looking for alternatives, and then if you, if you care, there are the environmental issues, which say that we ought to be doing something more strongly to move people out of cars and in the transit. And I think that, you know, we should all be seriously concerned about the COG report that came out last summer, where the worst-case analysis for the DC area is a 48% increase in CO2 by 2030, and the best case is a 16% increase in CO2 by 2030, and we're supposed to be going back to 1990 levels of CO2. So unless we do something really, really serious, we're not going to get there. And if we don't get there and we think the federal government is by magic in a mandated way to get there, I think we're going to be waiting a long time. And something like this is feasible, it's not out of the range of expenditures. We looked at bus rapid transit systems around the country that can be built for, you know, $10 million a mile, which sounds like a lot of money, working a 100-mile system is going to work out to $1 billion. But the district government is contemplating financing $1.5 billion in school repairs, and if the district government can handle that, then I think Montgomery County can handle its needs, and I think there's a real critical need to develop a transportation system. Very soon, we'll have, we'll have some stuff up on our website. The county executive asked, told the Transportation Environment Committee that his department intends to look at the network. We've been working with Park and Planning, Park and Planning wants to further explore developing the network. I met with the model last week, and this dovetails really well with their priority corridors. A lot of our lines are on their priority corridors, and they would prefer to do bus rapid transit rather than just put more buses on the existing roads, and that's all they can do. And so matching what they'd like to do with what we're trying to do is a really good synergy. And I've been doing the round... And I've been doing the round of land use attorneys, developers, civic groups, and environmental people, and just trying to cover as many people in the county as I can and say this is the opportunity for everybody to get on the same page and, you know, get behind the transportation program that we can begin to build and build in a reasonable period of time. So that's probably the most fun, having is working on that. So that's sort of where I am right now. Anything I can answer for you, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Let me cover three quick points, and then other people have some. In your discussion on the rebate formulas and the budget situation for everybody, what I always want to make sure to, that people understand is that the formulas can be dealt with, the money can always be phased in. And I know the county executive recognized that even before he set up the joint committee. But I think people tend to lose sight of that and just say, oh, well, you know, it's a terrible budget situation, and just kind of put it out of mind, and the formulas have to be fixed, independent of that.
I completely agree. We have a tendency on this and some other things to look at, you know, people say you shouldn't put these rules in place because the economy is down right now. Well, you know, the economy's not going to be down forever, and it's very hard to put rules in place when that changes. So you need to do the right thing because it's the best policy. And then if you've got, like you said, you know, deal with phasing things in when you're more able to do that, that's a different issue. But we need to be making the best policy decisions.
Yeah, because it's also disturbing that it just isn't coming back and isn't coming back. And then all of a sudden, we're at where we've been for, what, now? Two or three years already where everybody says, oh, well, just hold harmless the old numbers, and we'll deal with it because we don't have it in time for the budget, the budget's done.
Mm-hmm.
So if you can just say a couple of words about the union contracts and the raises that are in those and where things might be going?
The council doesn't have anything to do with this until somebody lands it on our lap, which is the beauty of the situation. It's very different than, you know, being, my experience up there, where the council was actually engaged in the negotiating process. And maybe some of you haven't been through that yet, but, you know, we were totally engaged in negotiations. The council doesn't see anything or hear anything until a package is brought over from across the street, and we have not a clue as to what the puts or takes are in that process. And I remember very well sitting, you know, in that room behind you with a discussion about, you know, the unions asking for this, we would like to get this, you know, what are the trade-offs here and how do we make something work? Council members unfortunately are not privy to that kind of discussion. And some of us have asked that we actually be briefed during the negotiating process because we're the ones that ultimately have to vote on the budget. And we'd like to know what assumptions other people are making for what we need to vote on.
Because my sense is you can't afford the contracts.
I don't, I don't see how. I mean, unless somebody's going to magically drop $250 million on us, and there's no will on the council to raise taxes. The executive is not going to put forward a tax proposal. There's nobody on the council who's going to put forward a tax proposal. We're likely to be looking at declining revenues and people less able to pay taxes rather than more able to pay taxes. So this is, this is not, this is not lining up really well. Jerry Weis said that the union believe the union contracts were sustainable, and they are supposed to be negotiating. And I think what happens with the teachers' union contract will become the mark for the other contracts, because it's very easy to get one group, very difficult to get one group of county employees to take a bigger hit than a different group of county employees. So what happens with the school contracts and the school budget, which we'll know by December 1st or December 15th, will probably be the mark for where the rest of the contracts go. But none of us are very happy about this, and a lot of the unions are saying if this is the way it goes, you know, what are the other non-money issues that we should be talking about?
Right. And it's, I think it's of particular interest to us because this is the year that we have the market study where we try and bring our salaries in line with the market, and we're going to be getting the results of that in a couple of months. But the preliminary numbers are numbers that we're not particularly going to like. And we've also had the experience of losing some good people to other jurisdictions who pay more than we do. And so we're pinched from both ends. And any relief of pressure for higher comparable salaries might make our job a little easier.
Yeah, I will say, it's not like these folks are paid royal sums. And so I've kind of blanched at the arguments that, you know, somebody's getting an 8% increase when you count the coal and the step, because, you know, for a lot of these folks, it's not all that much money. If you're a $40,000 employee in the SEI union and you get a whopping 8%, you're now making 43,200, you can't live in Montgomery County. And so I think that, you know, we, sometimes we get focused on the increases, and the real issue is, are people fairly unjustly compensated for the work they're doing? Is it competitive? And are we doing, I think, are we doing the right thing for our employees? And that is a balancing act. And at the end of the day, if there's no money, there's no money, and we're not going to be able to fund that. But I prefer to look at it as a matter of, you know, what's the fairest, most just thing to do with your employees, and then economic reality will dictate how far you go.
And just one other quick question. We've had a vacancy in the planning staff, and the suggestion has been made that we should look to the county to provide that function rather than replacing one of our two planners.
Does that have something to do with not getting any rebate for your planning staff?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good angle.
But, but it also strikes me that, given where I think Park and Planning is and staffing there, wondering whether we would have any chance of getting anybody, even if we did have a good argument?
I think the answer is no. In the first place, they've got some vacancies, and they're not in a position to hire right now. And we, well, we didn't take as, they didn't take as big a hit as other agencies took last year because we were concerned about undermining the planning function. They are somewhat stretched, and they've got a work plan. And so, you know, to put Tacoma Park into their work plan where it doesn't exist in their work plan would mean bumping something else out of the work plan at this point. And that's, I can tell you, that's a short-term problem. There are at least five different parts of the county that are asking for what we're calling now mini master plans. And Fenton Village is one of them. There are two or three sites in Bethesda. There's talk about FDA White Oak as another site, and there's one other somewhere. So you get up to four or five, Park and Planning can only do one of them. And so they are, they're not even doing the full work that we give them if we could. So I'm going to hold my breath.
Okay. Other questions?
I have something to follow up on that. That's sort of the pragmatic argument that we're not going to, you know, we won't get it, so we have to face that reality. And maybe in the short term, like with the rest of the rebate, it's not something that can be dealt with immediately. But now, having been here and seen the planning that we do at Tacoma Park level and also all around the county, is your sense that Tacoma Park gets its fair share of planning resources? Or do you think we, based on what the county gets on average, and is it something that we should in the long term be seeking to get more support around?
Well, you know, the, it's hard to use the word counties in a general term. I mean, there are parts of the county that are crying out for more attention and aren't getting it. And I can tell you, folks in Burtonsville don't feel that they're, you know, getting attention to their needs up there as fully as they'd like. And you could go across the county and find county residents in parts of the county that don't feel they're getting the full attention. I don't know the level of cooperation between the planning staff here and the planning staff in Park and Planning, and so I'm not going to, I'm not going to judge whether it's enough or not. You, you, we did get the master plan done a few years ago. Most parts of the county are way, way behind the master plans. You're looking at people with 15, 20-year-old master plans, and that's why we get stuck doing all these stupid zoning text amendments, because we don't have an up-to-date master plan to guide developments, and we're looking at these little spot projects as we go along. So I can't tell you whether it's fair or not. I think that what you said in the beginning is that the best alternative would be to get this included in the rebate formula, to the extent that you're doing services that the county would perform for other communities, you know, analyzing shopping centers, analyzing, you know, the commercial viability like we're going to be doing certainly for White Flynn, rather large comparison of what we are going to do for White Flynn. I think there's, there's room to justify a rebate. I think, you know, looking at New Hampshire Avenue, and what ultimately, how that ultimately gets developed, I think, is another place where the county ought to play a really big hand, because if it has enormous potential on New Hampshire Avenue, the beneficiaries of that tax revenue aren't just going to be the city, because this is going to be new development, this is going to be a big, big boom for Montgomery County. So I think this is a place where it really should be a joint project to look at the opportunities there.
And we are currently getting the joint sector plan. Councilmember Robinson.
Was that $4 billion for the county and not the schools, or did it include the schools?
That's about 50/50.
So there's another $4 billion for the schools?
No, 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 50/50.
Two and two.
Two and two.
Okay. And the cities make up about 15% of the population in the county, I believe, something like that.
15, 16%, somewhere in there, 17.
16% of the county.
Yeah.
And the rebate for all the municipalities right now is about 8 million, I think.
But you can't compare by that, because some cities don't hardly do anything.
Right, 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 that's true.
And we are probably the fullest, probably the fullest-service city. You know, Gaithersburg and Rockville.
But the differential is we make up 15% of the population, but we get a couple of percent of the budget of the county as a rebate. And then I hear you say, we've had this conversation before, that the county gets strapped in providing services to all the various kind of areas of the county. And your observation is that we here in the city do a much better job in some areas. And we also continually feel that the broad-based zoning issues, or the broad-based zoning that applies to much of the county doesn't apply to us because we're more of an infill situation. And I just, I'll say it again, although you've heard me say it before, that I'd love to see you promote more cities or more, promote a movement towards letting people be more autonomous in their areas, whether it's a special taxing district or enhancing the opportunities for becoming a municipality. And that's what I, and not to, to make the importance of your, of the bus rapid transit or the forest reforestation, those issues that you work on, I think those are great. But I, you'll hear it from me every time we talk, Mark, that empowering municipalities or small areas, special taxing districts will allow people to get more services at a better rate. And getting, you know, this is kind of, and then back to the rebate formula, that can enhance, that can enhance that trend.
See, now, I don't think that's necessarily true. For one thing, to create a municipality, you not only need the vote of the people, you need a vote of certain value of the property. And what makes municipalities incredibly viable, like Gaithersburg, is, and what, they've never issued a bond, and their taxes are like 35 cents. I mean, it's like, you know, best of all worlds, a huge commercial property base. You don't have a huge commercial property base. And if Tacoma Park, if Tacoma Park could have, you would have annexed Silver Spring a long time ago and brought in all the commercial property. We'd all cut our property taxes because we'd have the benefit of Silver Springs' commercial property. But there are places that aren't going to be able to do that. Most neighborhoods are not going to be able to cut in nice juicy pieces of commercial real estate and use that to underpin their tax base.
The folly, the folly areas, you mean?
No, I mean Wheaton. I mean, the voters in Wheaton, you know, they're not going to be able to pull Wheaton Plaza and the redevelopment there into a municipality, because Wheaton and them aren't going to vote for that to pay the taxes. And if you don't get that, you get Wheaton with a mix of housing that's going to have all the issues of policing and all these other services that they're going to be expected to deliver without a strong property, without a strong property tax base.
Well, the question is, what can the county do to make that a viable area, then?
I can't, the law says it's 80% of the property owners, and 80% of the assessed value has to agree. That's a state law.
For a municipality, but there's also the special taxing district. And I'm trying to think, what, how can the county be creative in getting services delivered at a more local level than, because I keep, you know, you keep saying that the services are delivered poorly and you're in a terrible taxing, I mean, the income stream is in terrible shape and, yeah.
But we all face, but we all face the same problems. I mean, the city is at the limits of what it can do. I mean, there are, you know, a lot of things we all wanted to do that we're not going to, don't get to do in either place.
Of course.
And the county has the double burden of financing a school system and the fire department and, you know, this 1,100 to 1,200 police and a bunch of programs that the city that doesn't have to deal with. And I think it's very, very hard to do that at a small level. Pick this, since everybody interfaces each other. It's not like New Jersey, where I've got a township and I drive up the pike, I've got another separated township. You know, you start carving in Montgomery County, all our borders bounce into everybody else's borders. It'd be real difficult to do traffic management, traffic planning, zoning. And I can tell you, the county has a fit right now at times with the zoning decisions made by some municipalities that decide, the way you annex is you decide you're going to give property owners things that the county never would give them. But then the county's got to provide this, you know, the improvements to the state roads and has to provide the schools. And meanwhile, the municipalities, a couple of them, get a large influx of tax revenue from doing that, but the problems are left on somebody else's doorstep. I think it's very complicated. I mean, I think the best hope is improving management of the county, which I don't think is an impossible task. I don't view government as fundamentally flawed, and I don't think that we can't make things work right. But I think you have to be really conscious about what you do, and you can't do what I feel happened to the county over the last decade or so, which is grow without thinking very carefully about how you organize and marshal your resources. If I simply, you know, if you're flush with money and somebody says, I got a new program, and you just glom that onto what you're already doing, it's real easy to have that thing get out of control. I thought one of the things the council did really well, and I asked Bruce to send me this, if you remember back during the budget discussion, was to look at the growth of personnel in the city. And to think, you know, we went through, you know, pretty, a lot of changes in Tacoma Park, and we changed a lot of the programs we did. We shifted the emphasis of what we did, but we did it with instructions the city manager of, you're not adding any people. So decide what's valuable and keep that, decide what's not working, get rid of it. And if you bring something new in, tell me why it's a better idea than what we're doing right now.
I love it when you make the case for municipalities, Mark. It's just so true. I mean, you're exactly right.
But that, but that is also possible for county government to operate the same way.
Is it?
Anybody can get up there and start prioritizing. That's what we need to do. I'm going to push prioritizing for that very reason, because I've seen how it works.
Can I just ask a follow-up question related to this? Because that'd be interesting, the perspective. If we did allow municipalities to pop up or people to create their own special taxing district, can you talk a little bit on what you think would happen related to the different, because the county's not uniform in terms of its income level? So what do you, what do you, might hypothesize would happen if we just let everybody sort of create their taxing district or municipality related to the differences in income in certain concentrated areas in the county?
And if you can do all that in one minute.
Yeah, look, I originally supported the Rollingwood Incorporated, but then I saw a document where they actually talked about giving a tax cut to the residents. And what they were going to do basically is take the 17% of the income tax, which goes back to the municipality, provide less services than would be consumed by that 17%, and kick the money back to the residents. But none of the rest of us does, does that. There's one jurisdiction in Montgomery County that does it, and nobody else does it. So that kind of alerted me to like, this could be a real problem. If everybody carved up districts like that. And so the scenario was, what if you did this in Avonel? You create a town of Avonel, you have a picnic once a year, and meanwhile, the residents of Avonel get 17% of their income taxes rebated back to the city government, which discovers they don't need 17% of the income of the people in Potomac, and they rebate it to the residents of Potomac.
Well, that's a situation where you, that's a situation where you roll off certain services that you.
I can't, but that's not the way it works. And so people could pick and choose. You could do, Friendship Pikes is basically a couple of condo buildings. You could take, you know, two condo buildings on the pike, declare yourself a municipality, say that the trash I'm paying for now out of my condo fee is being paid for by the municipal government, then off, take it off my condo fee and collect this money on the tax rebate for income taxes and be free and clear and get a bunch of money coming back to you. It's very unequal in how it can be applied. And there are no protections against it, and that's what concerned me. There was no way for us to say, you can't do that. When I found out I couldn't say, you can't do that, I decided I wasn't going there. And I've offered, you know, if people want to come back with another plan, come back with one that works for everybody.
Councilmember Klein.
Thank you for coming tonight. I was really interested to hear about consolidating different departments. I think it definitely makes sense to. different departments. I think it definitely makes sense to put the economic activities together and parking planning together and to hear about what's happening at the county level because it has such an impact on us here in the city. I know you heard me go on about WSSC, so I won't push that back on you, but just know, know that that is a fate we suffer here.
Yeah, I went two winters with a week without water because of the pipes freezing the creek. And they told me this year they think they've got a fix.
See, you share our pain. The idea of freezing a single position in the city and then passing things off to the county is unrealistic, particularly in the planning department, because so many things that we do are interrelated. But I think the concept that the county may face additional burdens from cities as cities are unable to sustain existing operations that actually benefit the county's bottom line is what I think the most important argument is to make to the county about continuing to engage in fair tax rebates. Because the fact of the matter is, you know, if push comes to shove, we may eventually have to give something up. And something, you know, of course, the most cost-effective thing to give up would be things that we provide services for that we get absolutely no rebate for. And the county's longstanding argument that they wouldn't have to add any staff to service Tacoma Park doesn't hold water. And you know that.
Depends what you get in services. I mean, if they did this to the police department and they treated you like a typical Montgomery County beat, you wouldn't see police officers very often.
Right. But the idea that you wouldn't have to add any policing at all to provide policing to an additional eighteen thousand people is not, is not a valid argument, even if the additional staffing that the county would provide would be to be comparable with the rest of the county or to be comparable with the other urban areas would be a half of a person or a person. There's still some cost involved there. And I, so I think that, so I think that's, that's one aspect that we should be somewhat upfront about. And that, you know, I hope that we don't face that. And I hope that the economy doesn't go that direction. And, but that is something down the line. The other thing that I want to say is that, I think I, in part, I agreed with some of the things you said, but in part not around the whole structural issue of the state-county-city relationship. And so I agree with you about the whole fairness thing, about cities who would incorporate just so they could give their residents the tax rebate and have a party once a year. That's not acceptable. But the fact that a city could do that points to many of the flaws in the way that taxes are distributed in the state of Maryland. And I think one thing, one conversation maybe to start at the, at the county level, if not at the state level, is what does more effective partnership with cities look like? And how do you delineate your different tax sources so that when a city incorporates and it takes over a particular function, it actually captures a tax revenue that is appropriate? The seventeen percent of the, of the
Income tax.
Income tax is a completely random number. And, you know, and so, you know, why? And I think that that's something to look at and maybe start having a conversation about as well. And one of the things that the county could do to help this is to think about, you know, what are the kinds of things that you do regionally that have to stay regional or that are regional in nature? And what are the kinds of services that truly are best provided at the local level? You know, do you have to have a county-wide program to fill potholes? Or does it make more sense to have a localized station that, you know, does pothole repair? There are some things that have to be regional, like the major transportation systems. Those need to be regional. I personally believe that because of the jobs, housing, and transportation balance, that there have to be regional factors that are related to that. But there still might be some things that are better done at a local level. And I think ultimately, the question that we may have to ask ourselves, and I hope that at some point the state of Maryland gets around to addressing, is that an urbanized county is not, is really not the best solution. And it doesn't necessarily mean that all cities is the best solution either. But I don't think we've got the right mix right now. And some of the structural problems that the county faces could be well-served by considering cities as partners and starting to move towards a financial structure that would allow a smoother development of those partnerships for those, and to pull out those component pieces that cities do want to take over where they can have fair money. And, you know, the rebate system is clunky and everything else. I think there are better ways to do that.
And if I can just add that I think that's what a lot of the angst is about at MML in terms of what to try and get through in Annapolis in terms of how the revenues are divided between the counties and the municipalities.
I don't disagree. When I was on the council, I argued that if the city did a service, we ought to get the first bite on the tax dollars, and the county should justify why it should get any additional tax revenue. What's it, you know, what's it providing in addition to what the city's providing, that it should get more money. But I'd pretty much be a minority on that, even if I suggested that approach now. And I think the issues about how things split out between the state and the county and the municipalities is well-taken. But you know, you've got a county where eighty-five percent of the people don't live in municipalities, and so I'm still left with, how do I deliver all of that?
Yeah. And the argument always is, well, if the municipality's got any more, that's not fair to the people in the unincorporated part of the county.
Yeah. And hopefully you all have made good arguments and explained to people that actually you're doing everybody else a favor. Because people do think that we're doing the municipalities a favor as opposed to realizing what's been offloaded from the county, that you're not paying nearly as much for it as if you have to deliver it yourself. I mean, remember, I remember just the discussions about road repair. They would never get away with spending that little money on road repair in Tacoma Park if this was a county function. It'd never happen.
Yes. And I think that to some extent, the tone of that debate has changed some. I don't hear that quite as much, although there's one county council member.
But I also hear from the state legislators.
Yeah, that's, that's just insane. I forgot what my point was. I'll call you later when I remember.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Elrich, for coming here. I really appreciate these opportunities to hear from you and what's going on with the county and get a chance to lobby you one-on-one for the issues that are important to the city. You mentioned the Washington Venice Hospital vision, and I think it's, it was great when I saw that. I look forward to seeing some of that implemented. But I think it's important for this council and also for the county council to realize that they presented a vision of what could be. And I think it's going to be important for us to get commitments for what will be before they get their certificate of need from the state. I think, you know, that gives us what little leverage we have with them. And I think it's important for us to try to get some final decisions from the hospital, final commitments from the hospital.
I think this is what you call a trust but verify situation. And I think that the council does need to make it clear that support for certificate of need comes along with guarantees that certain things are going to be done. I don't think you can guarantee the occupancy and tenancy of every building that's left on the campus. And that's maybe a little bit out there. You're going to file for a CON next year, and you're not going to build anything for four or five years. But it's certainly not unreasonable to get the basic principles of what needs to be there essentially down and agreed to before you get there.
Right. And I certainly trust their intentions. I think it's still a business arrangement, and we need to be professional in our business approach to it. I also think that, you know, they have certain needs that we could be responsive to also. The urgent care center is a perfect example that, that's something that's important to the city to be part of the facilities left behind. And anyone who's interested in lobbying, probably it's a topic we're going to talk about later tonight. That's an area where the city council and the, and the county council may be able to help Washington Venice Hospital in getting the laws changed so that the urgent care center makes sense.
I think you need to participate in whatever pressure you need in Annapolis to get the regs written so they can do an emergency center there. We certainly, we certainly could use more than urgent care if we can get the state regs to allow it.
Right.
I think it's worth pushing in that direction.
And I think it behooves us to sit down with the Venice Health Services and see how we can partner with them in getting that to happen. Lastly, you know, I also thank Mayor Williams for scheduling these opportunities with each of our county council members. I think it's really valuable. But lastly, I would just like to thank you for your support on the local issues here in Tacoma Park, not just the broader county issues. And most specifically for the much, the many hours of work and the difficult things that you've done for the Piney Branch Elementary Pool to get that reopened. I know that we still face some difficult decisions and difficult work on your part to make that happen. I just encourage you, if there's anything that I can do to help you, please let us know.
I think Valerie and George have been great on this. You know, we're all trying to make sure that this pool gets reopened. And I think we're all playing on the same pool deck or whatever.
And I am, I'm confident that you are getting your colleagues to get on board too.
I have something for you all to look into. The range in between Rock, the city of Rockville and Mary, my Mary Vail School, College Gardens Elementary School. The reason I bring this up is the city of Rockville kicked a bunch of money into the new gym. They were supposed to get a gym built on the elementary school. And they kicked in money, made the gym bigger, have an electronic scoreboard and bleachers. And they intimated at their meeting that the Rockville community gets somehow different access to the building. And all the time we've talked about things down here, it's always been, you've got to go through the ICB. There's no special relationship between a county facility, a school facility, and any jurisdiction. And when they were talking about this special relationship, I think you all might want to take some time to find out what that special relationship is. Because if they're building, for example, a new elementary school up here
Right.
and they're building a gym, you know, is there a way that in exchange for some help with some money that might have come from a hospital, that the gym gets enhanced to a different level and you get some, you get use out of it in a different way than otherwise would have been had?
I appreciate your mention that.
I just noticed on the side.
I've heard of the gym and the relationship the city has with the school system. Do you recall the name of the school again?
It's College Gardens.
All right, thank you.
It's in the city of Rockville. So it's perfect. The city kicks in money, public school gives city preferential use of gym.
Thanks for your time to
Yeah.
come here and all your efforts on behalf of everybody in the county. And I really appreciate the work you're doing. And I'd suggest that if you have a few more minutes, you might want to stick around. The, we're going to have a quick budget amendment and a quick consent agenda. And then the item that's been pulled off is the awarding of a contract for an intergovernmental representative or advocate. In other words, the city's new lobbyist is here. And you might hear a little bit about her background, and a lot of it is working on healthcare and things like that.
I took her to a meeting with Mr. Billeter in a neighborhood association of Poughmont Truce Pike.
Oh, lucky you.
So I drove here for this. Now I'm going to drive back there before I drive back here at the end of my night.
Your global warming footprint is getting bigger.
You know, if I could have all this other stuff I was thinking about in place, it would be a snap. But it's not. Anyway, thank you all.
Well, then in that case, you might, you might want to take a couple seconds on the way out just to meet our candidates.
Okay. Anytime you want me back, let me know.
Okay. And I think we'll have to schedule a longer for you.
That's a soundbite, Paul.
We will try and move along quickly through our regular items. The first one is a second reading ordinance authorizing FY 2009 budget amendment number one. Is there anything you need to say about that?
No, I just wanted to call to the council's attention that there have been some modifications since first reading last week. Those are highlighted on the ordinance that is before you. But just very quickly, the current FY 2009 budget does include some funding for some residual work on the residential section of the Carroll Avenue Street Gate project. I won't bore you with the accounting, but we ended up having a higher balance than what is included in the budget. So essentially, what this amendment would do is up the expenditure amount in the budget to reflect the balance of the grant funds that we received. The second has to do with community legacy funds. Last fall, I guess it was, we had included in our community legacy application two projects for non-city entities. One was on behalf of Main Street Tacoma. The other was a project for Historic Tacoma. The Main Street project did receive community legacy funding. When we were doing the budget, I think the assumption may have been that those funds would flow directly to Main Street Tacoma. But the city is actually the grant recipient. So the budget needs to be amended to reflect essentially almost our acting as a fiscal agent for Main Street Tacoma.
Okay. Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Clay. Is there any discussion?
I have one comment.
Yes.
Every time we pay for something on Carroll Avenue Street Gate project, my residents come and ask me when the city is going to put in new sidewalks and retaining walls. And they particularly like the art tiles and want those installed in their community as well.
Good that they like. Any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye. Oh, this is second reading, we have to roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. The next item is the consent agenda with the item C removed. So we're considering three resolutions endorsing community development block grant projects, providing for appointments to the arson humanities commission and the police employees retirement plan committee. And we have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for purchase and installation of a modular office in the police evidence bay. Somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Move, gentlemen.
Councilmember Snapper moved, Councilmember Barry second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. That passes. Now we move on to item C. Yes.
To be put as a single reading ordinance, should we follow?
I never get it all. Never. One of these days, I even wrote it down, move and roll call. Will Congress please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
I think you just need to give me a big balloon with stuff written on it to hang out there in front of me. Thank you. We will now move to item C, which is the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for intergovernmental representative advocate to Seacott and Elliot. Suzanne Loglo is here to introduce Ann Seacott.
Yes, you have it for you, a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for lobbying services on behalf of the city of Tacoma Park. And in, for many years, we used Larry Levitan of Griffken Livingston, Levitan and Silver. And while they're, they were an excellent firm on those issues that they could help us with, they had some conflicts of interest on a number of issues, and we weren't able to be represented by them. A good amount of the work fell to me and to you. And especially during my position as community and government liaison. As we had restructuring, the city manager restructured some of our positions, the community and government liaison position was abandoned, was abolished. And I was trying to do a little bit more than a full-time job, and we were looking to contract out these services. We issued a request for proposals. We did receive two responsive proposals, one from Seacott and Elliot of Annapolis and one of Elon Capital Partners of Washington, DC. And we had the opportunity to meet the principals of both firms and review their resumes. And we're very impressed with the experience of Seacott and Elliot in working with the state government. And you had an opportunity before this meeting to meet Ann Seacott and I'd like to have her say hi.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Do you have any questions or?
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as most of the members of this council know, I'm really familiar with at least one of the members of the, of the other bidder.
Right.
And I'm very comfortable with their ability to represent the city. And so I'd be interested to hear Ann, some of the experience you've had in And so I'd be interested to hear Ann, some of the experience you've had in dealing with the state legislature.
Thank you. I have been lobbying in Annapolis on a variety of issues since 1992. So coming up on, I forget if that makes 18 or 19 years of lobbying in Annapolis. I am very familiar with the legislature, with their process, both the budget process as well as the legis, how a bill becomes a law. And the committee structure, have relationships with legislators on both sides of the aisle, and very good relationships as well with people in the executive branch and throughout the state departments, the different agencies in the state. Have worked on a variety of issues, some of which I know are important to the city of Tacoma Park. Deal with a lot of healthcare issues. Here very clearly that one of your priorities going into the 2009 legislative session will be related to the urgent care center. At least, I'll make that assumption, based on what I've heard this evening. And a lot of healthcare issues, civil rights issues, as well as some, some healthcare profession issues as well. And I think that one of the things that we like to do at CCOT and Elliott is ensure that we are making the best use of your time, as you had mentioned earlier this evening, being very careful about when it is that you're best represented by your lobbyist and when you are best represented by yourselves, and trying to help you engage in that as well. We are a full-service lobbying firm, and we help with strategic planning when it comes to your priority pieces of legislation. We do thorough bill monitoring during the legislative session. We believe very strongly that in terms of relationship building with legislators, that that actually happens best during the interim. Now, of course, I think any municipality probably starts from a very good place with relationships with legislators from your jurisdiction. However, if there are relationships that you lack when it comes to certain policy committees or any budget committees, we certainly will help target what legislators, you should be building relationships with, and spend time working on that as well.
And do you have the experience in lobbying at the federal level?
Very limited. It has mostly been limited to grassroots strategy development and grassroots response, but do have some relationships with some of the folks in, with some of the offices of the congressional representatives from Maryland.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for-
Certainly.
That's a familiar noise to it.
Um, yes.
Thank you for providing that information and background, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, as do I.
Any other comments here? Any other public comments? Seeing none, if it's a single reading ordinance, will court please call a roll?
Is there a motion? How did it go?
Move, second.
Robinson and Wright. Now, will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Lord.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
That passes. So, again, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'll forward to it.
And we will now take a short break. We will come back at 9:20 on the clock.
And we're going to deal with strategic plan, council priorities. And I'd like to take a couple of minutes to just kind of track what's happened since our last discussion. At the last discussion, Councilmember Wright had the operative draft, I guess is as good a phrase as any. He and I talked for a while and came up with a couple of changes that we thought needed to go into there. He put those changes in there, and in a minute, I'd like him to just talk about a couple of those, just to note what they are, since I don't think they're highlighted. And if you don't have them highlighted, I do, I could talk about them.
Why don't you talk about them? I'm not sure where we are from the edits I made, and then you made more edits.
Right. So, and then he sent it to me, and I made a couple of changes to that. I pointed out a couple of things where I had questions that I thought we might want to deal with, and I tried to generally take what had been a number of people's points and a number of people's writings and phrases that all got mushed together, that kind of looked like a committee wrote it, and tried to give it a little bit more of the same form so that it flowed a little better. I know that since that edit, which had difficulties making its way between versions of Word, and some people could open my redlined version and other people couldn't, and then it became a WordPerfect document, and there are still formatting issues with it. And then on top of all of that, I believe Councilmember Snipper has handed around his edits on that one as well, so we have a number of different copies in front of us. And I'll just start with a couple of those kind of major changes that Councilmember Wright put into it, just to highlight those, since those are not in any red or green versions. And then we can try and catch the high points on those edits, and then talk about what we need to do to get this ready to at least go to the next stage of getting some comments from staff, and then being able to have something that we can put out there for public comment, and get this thing started so that the city manager has some direction on what might go into the work plans for some of her staff who are well into the year and need some of that direction. So, it's been a while getting to this point, but I hope we can at least get it to the next step after this evening. If you look on page one, which is kind of the intro page, what was added here was the very last element in elements of a definition in the strategic plan. Right, the last one, core services, was added, because a number of places, we reference core services, but there was no real definition of what that was. The items that are in there were basically my take on what I thought core services was. Some of you all might have a different idea, but my reaction to that was, oh, that's easy. That's public safety, that's infrastructure. So, that might be someplace where somebody wants to make a comment. The other thing that was added right after that is the progress section, which is essentially acknowledging that some of the things that are in here, there's been a good amount of progress made on those, and in some instances, they may be very close to coming online, shall I say. So, wanting to make sure that people didn't look at this and go, wait a minute, I thought we've been working on this, this document doesn't recognize that. So, it's like, we're not starting at year zero, we're starting with a lot of things in progress, and acknowledging that. The, just wanted to see if there were any other of those kind of large changes that made it into it at that point. I don't think so. Oh, if you just go back to the Gantt chart, the last page. And if you note that at the very bottom, there are footnotes that talk about some of the items in there, and I guess the whole Gantt chart, had that been there before? I don't thi-- I think that was a change, that whole last page is an addition.
Yeah, it's new from the last time we looked at the plan.
Right, right. So, if you just want to say a couple of words about that page.
Sure. Basically, what we're trying to do here is acknowledge that we think there are a number of things that are important for the city to work on, more than we can all get done in one year. I mean, I think we all acknowledge probably we should, when we're giving Barb and the city staff priorities for a given year, that it needs to be some number of priorities they can easily remember, and that's probably in the four to six range. But that doesn't mean that the work might not be done on something we think is important for the long, in the long term for the city. And we may do a little bit of work, it may not be a priority in a given year now, and do a lot of work in future years. So, the idea here is just to sort of give us a sense of, okay, over the next five or six years, where are we going to be exerting particular focus and resources on these, the larger number of items we have here? And the idea is sort of to get a general level of focus and effort, red being the most significant, orange being sort of middle level of focus and resources, and yellow being less. So, that's kind of the general idea, and then the notes at the bottom are just to acknowledge in a little bit more specifics, there are places where we are, we've made progress in the specific aspects to give a little color to what the chart's trying to say.
And if I can just add that in my going through the, and kind of trying to make it, pull it all together in one common form and make a little bit more sense out of it, one thing I did not do was to take these footnotes at the end here and necessarily tie them into specific places in the text. I just ran out of time and energy and decided that if we, that things might change anyway, and if we needed to do that, that could be a next step. But I think it certainly would be appropriate this evening to keep this chart in front of us, and it may be that there are particular points where some of us feel that the, kind of the distribution in that chart might not reflect what we want, and probably tonight is a good time to give feedback on that so that we can begin to refine that as well.
The other change, Bruce, from the last time we looked at this in public session, is that we wrote, tried to take a crack at sort of an executive summary, which to me should be something that someone can easily reach via page, two pages at most, and sort of get the gist of what we're talking about in here, and also to include in there sort of the more immediate, short-term areas of focus. And I think one thing that might be nice for the staff in particular is if we can potentially get agreement around those five areas at the bottom, which would be the more short-term immediate focus, because I know that the staff at times is sort of unsure what they would like, they would like, or what we would like the priorities to be for the remainder of this council's term, which is now basically a year.
And if I can also point out, in that executive summary and in the body of the document itself, that there were a couple of minor changes to the second and third goals, and if you look at those, we want to make sure that in making those edits, that somebody doesn't feel that the meaning was changed, that there was, or that there was a particular reason to have that language. That language has, was there the last time we looked, that there were these minor changes. So, the, in the livable community one, it was essentially just taking out some of the language after livable, giving it a colon with those examples of vibrant, healthy, and safe. And in the engaged, responsive, and service-oriented government, just, it was, let's say, not substantive, just grammatical.
Parallel construction.
Yes. There are a number, a lot of what the, a lot of the editing that I did last night instead of eating supper was parallel construction. And I won't claim to have gotten it all.
The last comment I would make is that, because I know this has been raised a number of times, I know that Terry Colleen and Ruben worked very hard on their diversion, which was in a different format. I did at one point go through and try and incorporate every item that was on that, either in exact language or trying to sum up, and at that time, what I was trying to do also to get some sort of construction that was similar or parallel. And so, if there's anything that's omitted that you got, that you think that either isn't in here in spirit or specifics, you know, it's not intentional slight of any of those ideas that we said.
Okay. And then if I can just note a couple of the things that I, that weren't kind of that parallel construction editing, but were more substantive than that, if you're looking at the redline version, has everybody had the redline version? On page four, a quick little one that I don't think anybody will have trouble with, but under the priority projects two, I know we used to refer to Old Town and Tacoma Junction as different, but I think essentially Tacoma Junction was joined at the hip with Old Town, and so I put that and the city on parking lot all in one place as one thing to focus on, rather than breaking them out separately. And in the section below that, I have the note about the greenhouse gas emission reduction plan for the city, wanting to make sure that we don't ignore the fact that we have one of those, we haven't looked at it in a while, but we need to reference it, and also think about how we might want to align whatever we do with the COG plan that's about to be adopted, and whatever county plan there is. So, not trying to reinvent the wheel, but in some cases, just refer to those or incorporate them, or however we think is best to do it. Then on page six, the, trying to maybe bring special projects and facilities and services in with some of the things that we already have in the five-year CIP and the equipment replacement reserve, not wanting anybody to think that we are trying to create something new, but it might just be an expansion of what we've already got. In the, on page eight, I tried to combine some of these, and one that I did take out there at the very bottom of the page, it was mostly because this was, I think this is the area talking about recreation programs, and then there were, there was one of them there that was just talking about the library, and so I was trying to kind of make sure that the focus there was on the coordination and cooperation with various entities and other departments from the point of view of the Recreation Department. On the page nine, at the top of the page there, under number three, thinking about the items that we just passed, I believe, last week in the consent agenda for the sidewalk studies, kind of recognizing that, and also noting that on item C there, that the, that we do have a, some kind of bike transportation plan that's in our existing master plan. I didn't take the opportunity to go back and look at it, but we aren't necessarily starting out having to create something there, we've got something that we can reference that we, that has been in effect for now, I believe, seven years. And if we go back and look at it, we may be surprised how much is in there. And then, I think, there may be something else, but on page 10, under priority projects, my question there is, thinking about the, any tracking system for customer service by the departments, or tracking by council members, whatever we do, there was language in there about tracking all questions, and all requests, and I just wanted to call to our attention that we might not want to make that request, that we could end up with staff spending an awful lot of time keeping track of everything, and we would end up with the bean counters in charge, and we wouldn't be getting our priorities done. So, I didn't necessarily want to come up with the language last night, but I wanted to call to our attention that we might need to change exactly how we say that. And I think I will call it quits on those. I will note, before turning to Councilmember Snipper to tell us anything he needs to tell him, us about his, that the black and white copy that you have in front of you should be the redline version with all of the redlining removed, and some additional simple edits that became obvious once I removed all the redlining, and there were a couple of spelling issues that I did take care of, there were not, what I did not, what I was not able to take care of was some of the formatting issues as it transferred from Word to WordPerfect, and I decided that since some things might change anyway, I was not going to tear my hair out over those issues. I might let the city clerk try and deal with those.
Who stole all the copies of Word?
I do. It's the only way to go. Word is horrible. I hate it. I don't hate many things in this world, but I hate Microsoft Word. I would rather never use that awful program.
Is this an uncompensated testimonial?
Yes, I would be, I would be happy to go and give testimony about that. And I particularly like the reveal codes function, which was, which made it much easier to fix some things.
I do like that, I'll admit.
Councilmember Snipper. And, oh, and just one other thing, I could not find out how to turn off the redlining in Word. Could not find it.
It's, there's a little, anyway.
And one other thing while I think of it while I'm looking down that way, the city manager is, needs to, is, needs to be down at the Ronald Reagan Building at 7:30 tomorrow morning to work a conference on behalf of the city, and so, anything we can do to get her out of here, she will appreciate. Councilmember Snipper.
Okay.
The manager's here, she could fill in.
The version you have with the R in the upper right-hand corner is the one I edited, and I took Bruce's, the one from earlier in the day, I was able to open it.
Unlike some other people.
And that's true, and I, my changes appear not entirely, but mostly in green, some of Bruce's show up in green. I haven't understood exactly why, some of yours are in one color and some aren't, but anyway.
The joys of Word.
The joys of Word. I can tell you what I did. On my page three, under assumptions, some of the assumptions in there appear to be hypotheses or research questions, rather than an assumption about what will happen in the future, so I changed them a bit, particularly about rental housing. On the, under the environment one, I changed it from global warming to climate change, which is the more usual word, and that's the word that's used elsewhere in the document. I did a little wordsmithing on the next page, pretty minor stuff. Down under priority projects, for our five-year citywide redevelopment plan, I added "manginization" as to be part of that plan, and a slight editing of one of them, because we have the focus on New Hampshire, I have Old Town, Tacoma Junction, creation of the Tacoma Park, CDC Land Trust, and we do need something about elsewhere in the city. Under the environmental plan, I added a specific item buried in there about reducing city energy use, just a straight, let's just reduce our use kind of concept, because I think that's something that we could come up with a plan, rather than, you know, gas emission reduction plan for the entire city is fairly broad and hard to specify one, it's something more concrete.
Can I ask a question without Ruben?
Yes.
Is there some other value in reducing the energy use besides, like, if energy was provided by renewable, is there some value other than saving money?
Saving money.
No, it's just strictly saving money.
Okay. But yes, obviously, certain kinds of energy is better than others, so, yeah. On the next page.
Also, I'll just add there that when you burn energy to make light, or a lot of other things, it creates heat. So, the less heat you create, the better off you are.
Unless it's the winter.
Sorry, were you suggesting that how the, that all the lights we have actually are a source also of global warming, or does that contribute beyond the greenhouse gas? It could be a mixed bag. In the summertime, you have higher air conditioning costs if you have more lights, in the winter, you have reduced heating costs because you have more lights, if the lights generate heat, which many do. That's the basic theory. Yeah. On my page five, at the top there, on the Sligo Creek Task Force, there are already some community groups that are working on these issues, and I just thought we should be sure and coordinate with them. On the key indicators, I added two things to virtually all of the key indicators. One of them is that one of the indicators should be a kind of progress on these various plans. These plans are going to have a timeline to them, a phasing, you know, year one, year two, year three. And so, there's two kinds of key indicators. One key indicator is the development of the plan. I mean, we're going to have a, some kind of scheduling for when the plants are supposed to be developed. And then second, when the plan gets implemented, we're going to want to have indicators that say, okay, you've done phase one of the plan, phase two of the plan, phase three of the plan. I like to put these kind of things in, because they're low-hanging fruit, if you will, that is, I assume we're going to do them, so we're going to get credit for it, so we don't always look like we have all these negatives, you know, we didn't reach our goal, we didn't reach our goal. I hate that. This way, there'll be things that we can reach. And the other thing I added to, all of them are--
What's the implication there?
Correct me.
You said this way, we can have things that we do reach, implying that we can only reach the low-hanging fruit?
No, we're going to make all of these, but just because, sir, we might not.
Increase an accountability for us, because as Bruce pointed out, we have a climate change plan.
Right.
I think we have no idea whether we, you know, achieved any of the goals in there, or what they were, or were they set up by a timeline or anything.
Yeah. This way, we'll have an actual indicator, we'll get a report that says if it was our goal, and whether we met it or not. And then I added, asking for one performance-based budget measure for one of these priority projects. And if you'll recall, the key idea in the performance-based budget is that you tie a function, activity of the city, to an outcome performance-type measure. We actually, I noticed that Josh and Bruce put some of those in already, which I was very glad to see, and some of the later ones, where you have something like a, I think it was a trash pickup one, tons of trash, what's the percent of the trash that's recycled, you know, that to me seems like a performance, because it's tied to an actual city function. Those kind of indicators are what I mean by the performance-based.
Right, and we do already have those figures.
Yeah, and we do. So, it's, they're easy to do.
And we also put on page 10, there's actually one of the priority projects, it is performance-based budgeting, with the creation of a few indicators for each department.
I did see, I left that one in, yeah. You did see that. You did see that. Okay, and then a couple of other additions that I did to highlight here. Little bits of wordsmithing on page six. The one I wanted to highlight was down toward the bottom on strategies about number eight, proactively supporting redevelopment. I think we, when we actually get to a plan process, planning and implementing process, that we make sure we involve the community in this. I assume we were going to do it anyway, but I would like to say, state it explicitly. And then, flipping over to page eight, I have a, a number of changes here. Eight is the whole set of priority projects that are part of the livable, livable community. And I added two, two more, which came from the work that Terry, Colleen and I did, that I didn't really quite see well written up in the, in the others. And they were to develop some kind of program or process to bring new members of the community into using city services, on the one hand, and also to be involved in Citizens Committee and other community activities, a way of, kind of an outreach function of bringing more people in. That's number four. And then also, I do think that focusing some energy on our arts community and helping it, in particular, helping it to become more self-supporting, that the city could serve a facilitating function for that. So that's number five. And on page nine, down under Priority Projects, under the improving customer service part, I kind of combined a couple of them there because they were a bit redundant, and I agree with you, tracking all of them is probably not what we want to do. But I added one about, that, that Colleen, Terry and I had about a regular training that's done for city staff, and that's a way of getting some new ideas spread around the city. It may be, we have outside trainers, or it may be people who are doing a terrific job in the city, can share their ideas at, at that kind of regularly scheduled thing. Page 10, another one of the priority projects that didn't seem to get picked up, because we had done ours. When we did ours, we did it by department, so we assigned priority projects to particular departments. And I think this one just got dropped a bit, and concerned collaborating with library staff, because they have resources that could be used for various public information kind of activities. They contact a lot, the library contacts a lot of people and so on, so that was, that was an addition.
And can I interrupt you for just a second while you're on that page?
Yes.
One that I forgot to point out above that is D up above, must be in number two, on the online reporting of streetlight outages. The question that came to my mind was.
Yes.
Gee, this is, this is already being done by Pepco. It's their function. Do we have to duplicate everybody else's function in order to track this? Can't we just coordinate with Pepco? This is service duplication we don't need to, to spend money on.
There was some concern about whether in fact Tacoma Park was served by this.
No, that's, that's not.
That's the county, that's the county website.
That's the GIS map. The county has a GIS map that shows all the poll locations and numbers, which helps facilitate more accurate reporting, and it makes it easier for people to report, because you can see a poll on the way home that's out, note kind of where it's at, and then go look it up on the map and turn it in rather than have to get out of your car and scroll down the numbers.
The other issue though, related to this was, if you remember last year, when we had all the issues related to streetlight outages, Pepco actually admitted that the online system didn't always work properly. It wasn't actually connected into the, the service delivery effectively. Maybe that's been resolved. And then the other thing is they said there was no ability to report on that, to say, okay, here's all the requests that are made, here's the, the timeline, which it was resolved and fixed and, and report back to us. So I think it'd be great if we didn't have to duplicate that service, and maybe we can work on getting Pepco to do it, but.
And though it may be dropping the online part is the, is the way to do it, we don't need to duplicate their web capability, but we do need to have facility for reporting the streetlight outages and getting them corrected.
So this one is a little bit more digging to find out exactly what we would do for this one. I think you're exactly right.
But I thought it was one example of where we don't have to do everything twice.
Yeah. And I'll make one other.
Yep, yep.
General comment, on the bi- biannual survey, I, I don't know that we'll be doing a biannual survey, that's kind of an assumption. And personally, I would prefer using our closely tied semi-performance type indicators that we've started to list instead, because they're, they're tied to something the city does, they're actually linked. You know, if you have people going through a recreation program, and then you ask them, how good was the program, then you can find out whether the program was a good program or not. Whereas if you get something done where people are recalling, six months later or nine months later, did you like recreation? It's not really tied to the specific city function or activity. And that's why I, I'm, I'm not too keen on using the resident survey, except in some very general way. So I, so I put this in to encourage discussion.
And, and, okay, and I, and I think, I don't know, I'm tempted to say, should we take a minute or two just on that last point about the survey? Just to get a quick read on whether people think that doing the survey, repeating the survey on some defined period is a good thing to do, it's worth more consideration, not sure yet, or no, don't want to go there? Because my sense was that we had kind of talked about, gee, every two or three years we would be repeating it in some fashion. So I, I think it might be good at this point to just get a little more clarity on that. So, Dan.
My sense is that the staff got a lot out of the survey. We got something, but the staff seemed very interested in the survey and gave them, I, I saw them animated after that. And that, that was of value to me. And I think might be of value to us. Whether the survey asks the same questions every two years, I think is not, is important. But if the staff feels like they need that input, we ought to not preclude it.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also interested to see how, I'm, I'm less enthusiastic about doing a resident survey that frequently, but I'd like to see how this ties into the community indicators project that has just been initiated, because I think that may be in fact the community input that we're really seeking. And so maybe it's a kind of a hybrid between what Mr. Rubin's suggesting and, and the community indicators project.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I'm in favor of doing the survey again. I don't know if it's every two years or every few years. I think it does, and although I don't think you have to ask exactly all the same questions, I think it is important to ask some of the same questions, because I think you want to track how you're doing in certain things over time. And I, and I agree with Rubin that it's not, not everything in there necessarily has to be a key indicator. But I do think some of the global things can be helpful about how your job are doing, and also comparing across the city, on people's relative scores on those, on those things, I think is also very important.
And I'll, and I'll just add that I see value in repeating the survey on, on some schedule, just to see how we're doing. And I, I see value all the time in all these surveys that are put out now around the election with, going back in some cases back to 1950, with some of these surveys, that they've been asking these questions. And to see the steady change over time in, in some of the questions that are asked, and, and how there's big movements over time, and it's, I think it's just very helpful to have some kind of data to be able to look at that, rather than going, well, you know, things seem to be different back then, but I can't really say for sure. So I'm, I'm not sure of the timeframe, but I think it's valuable to do. Other comments?
Well, I, I agree with them, your, your view, Bruce, that it does provide a kind of indicator, generalized indicator, where the city is. And so I can imagine doing it every five years or something like that. But I don't, I don't see it tying into specific actions that we would then take. You know, to know that wards four, five and six are, you know, not as well off as the other wards, you know, you can just drive around the city and figure that out. But it's nice to have a quantitative number for it, or confirmation of, of the kind of informal stuff. So I, I do see value in, in that sort of generalized way for it. But I was looking for, you know, getting the bang for the buck, as it were. So that's why I was focusing more on things that would be decision issues for us.
It sounds to me like maybe some input from staff on that particular question may be helpful. It doesn't have to be now, I mean, if you want to say something now, but I was just thinking that you, you might be able to provide a little bit of insight on the, the sense that Dan was getting, that it really animated staff with that information, and, and how it might be tied into some specifics that Rubin wants, but doesn't feel it's necessarily going to give us.
No, I mean, I think it would be fair to say, I think the staff has spent a lot of time, I think, going over the resident survey, and I think there's sometimes things that you think you know, but somehow, you know, kind of seeing it in black and white with the numbers. And I think certainly the, the many, many pages of comments that we got, I think in many cases have translated into some action. I mean, I think just a couple weeks prior to this meeting, and it may be a simple thing, but certainly we got feedback that I don't know that we necessarily had anticipated about the style of the police uniforms, and how that made people feel about their own police department looking like SWAT officers. I think we came forward to this council, I think back in February, based on some of the comments we received, and implemented an, you know, a new patrol deployment plans, largely based on the feedback that we got. I don't necessarily think that some of what you're talking about in terms of, I think what Councilmember Snipper mentioned, in terms of perhaps specific feedback, customer service feedback about rec programs, the library does some surveying now, is necessarily mutually exclusive or incompatible with doing a resident survey. I, I think probably all of the above are probably a good thing. I think the one thing that the resident survey offers that some of these other feedback mechanisms don't, is a way to get a, a statistically valid representation of what the community as a whole feels, whereas that's not necessarily going to happen if you're just asking someone to fill out a survey after a rec program, or a library program, or something done by housing. There's no ability, when people are sort of self-selecting whether to participate, to then go back through and kind of rebalance based on the demographics of the community. So I think it is, I think it's very valuable from my perspective at least, to do it on a periodic basis.
I would just add two additional comments. One I want to understand, is it's considered sort of a best practice for good city management for a medium-sized city like ourselves? And then the other thing I think is, I was just echoing Bob's comment about it's not a either-or situation, because, for example, to use the example that Rubin cited, you might be getting great feedback on people who participate in recreation programs, but that may be because those are the people who are going to the recreation programs that like what's being offered. You could get a whole bunch of other people that say, well, I think the recreation programs in the city are not good, and basically they're just self-selecting out. And that would come out in the resident survey.
I think in answer to Councilmember Wright's question, you know, Suzanne and I both went to the ICMA conference, and they had an entire session talking about community surveys and how people were using them and how it sort of changed their practices. So I think it answered your question. I, I would say the probably more progressive, sophisticated communities, I think, you know, do a variety of surveying, some are male surveys, everybody has their own type that I think works in their own community. Most of the communities I worked in have used them in one way or another. In state that I worked in previously, you had to, any kind of bond issue required voter approval, so you saw a lot of surveying to try to gauge whether there was support for certain aspects of a proposal, how you might modify it to get acceptance. I think we have found them valuable. You know, I think this council clearly has a lot of interest in terms of kind of communication-related issues, and I think there was some fairly valuable information that came out of the resident survey that we have talked about as a staff, in terms of where do people actually get information about the city, and trying to figure out how we target things to those vehicles that seem to be more welcoming to people. And, you know, kind of where you put your resources is where they're going to pay off the most.
Hopefully that was helpful in deciding where we might want to go with that. Are there other comments by people who haven't done major edits in the last few days, who want to, who want to give their two cents? Colleen? And tell us which version you're working on.
The one that has an R on it.
Okay.
Okay, there's some technical things under the assumptions, under sustainability. So number one, fiscal E.
Which page do you want?
This is three of 13.
Okay.
If nothing is done to the property tax rate, property taxes will continue to rise for homeowners as the 10% increase cap catches up with the assessments. It'll continue to rise for long-time homeowners. For recent homeowners, it'll stay the same. So if we could change that to long-time homeowners. The other element that's in here is that as home prices stabilize, the tax differentials created by the homestead tax credit will equalize. And I don't think we said that explicitly, and that's, that's probably how I would say it, is as home prices stabilize.
Is this a new item, Colleen?
Yes. It's not quite.
Oh, it's on C, it's sort of, that's the one.
Yeah, it said, that's right, C. So it says the price of housing will stay flat or slightly increase in the foreseeable future, resulting in close to flat property taxes. So a sentence to follow right on that and stay in C would be, as home prices stabilize, tax differentials created by the homestead tax credit will equalize. Under F, where it says property taxes on rental housing will rise. Okay, then on, the other thing on E is what it says, these percentages, these percentage increases will far exceed the rate of inflation and the percentage increase of average household income for the city. This will have a disparate impact on fixed and low-income homeowners.
And you're going to email these changes?
Sure. Then where it's on F, where it says property taxes on rental housing will rise more slowly than on residential housing, that's actually only going to be true for rent-controlled housing. You should get a natural rise on units that are exempt from rent control, in the sense that it would match the surrounding county areas. It's the rent-controlled properties that would have this, this different increase.
See, now, for me, that's an empirical question. It's not really a hypothesis. It's not really an assumption.
Well.
Because I think you can make the argument that the lower vacancy rates that we have, you're, this is my.
It's irrelevant to the, to the value of the property, though.
Well, you're making money, though. So.
It's not about making money, it's about the tax, it's about the baseline housing tax assessment. The, this, it, it may make a difference in profitability overall to a landlord, the vacancy rate, absolutely, but it doesn't affect the housing market in that way.
But it affects the sales, and that's what they use for the assessments.
No, the, the assessment would be based on, it should be based on their, their capability to produce income, or what their various, what their various uses might be.
or what their various uses might be.
Can we have joint language from you two on that one?
They have a really limited impact. The impact would not be significant at all.
See, that's where I just, that's why I think it's an empirical question.
If you both agree on language, we'll accept it.
Yeah.
Well, I was just, I'm pretty much unsure about that, because I don't, I think, maybe written here, you could think of the hypothesis, so we could go out and actually figure out the answer. But I'm, I'm pretty sure that assumption would be correct if you just think of magnitude of the two issues. Like, how much lower is the vacancy rate and that impact versus basically putting a, not allowing property in your rents to increase. It's a significantly, you know, the magnitude of the two issues. And so you, I think you very clearly see.
See, that's why I think it's, that's right.
And I don't think that's good or bad. We should just, we should just have the assumptions.
Right. That's why, that's why I want to work on the language here. Because I, I found the language not very helpful in some of the questions.
Okay. The next one is G. The restraint, again, the restrained property taxes on rent-controlled housing means that property taxes, and instead of single-family homes, it actually would be owner-occupied housing. The property taxes on owner-occupied housing, not just single-family housing, would be higher to support the same level of city services.
And that would be true of commercial properties also.
So, we should.
Yes. If, well, yes, it would depend on how you mixed out your housing and your commercial property tax rate. So you could actually, through policy, correct for that structurally. But structurally, it is impossible for us to correct for the differences in the housing, the assessment rates, because assessments are done at the state level and we can't make modifications or changes to that. So I wouldn't include the commercial because it's an applicable, more reduced kind of argument. Okay.
So, it's something, language, something along the lines of, "The restrained property taxes on rent-stabilized housing means that property taxes on owner-occupied homes are higher to support." Some language along that line is what you're after?
So, it's for a comparable unit.
Do you see why I had to go with all of these?
Right.
Because you're at a level of detail. I would have put something more general if we were up to here.
Well.
Can we have a subcommittee of you three to come up with the language, really?
Sure. The reason that it's important is because it impacts the policies that we would come up with for housing affordability in the homeownership market. It's not important in that sense relative to the rental market. It's important relative to developing affordable housing in the homeownership market and what that means for that and why it might be more of a challenge than in another community of similar circumstances and getting people to think about maybe some unique opportunities that that might create as well. I haven't thought of any, but, but just the fact that you're aware that structurally, I think, would help you to plan for it. Okay. On the next page, four of 13, actions to control manchinization. I would just throw in a caution here before we throw open such a broad charge to the city that there's a lot of, a lot of the different things that you do would involve significant work on the part of the planning department in structures that we don't have in this city. And so we might want to more narrowly define our focus area of what we're going to do because we could spend billions of dollars trying to affect manchinization and be completely ineffective at it. Whereas we might spend some energy lobbying other entities that have the capacity to make those changes or, you know, doing some other things that were more localized.
Yeah. My hope in fact was to get the county to pass something good, actually.
That would be good. Page six of 13, where there's been some reword smithing on livable community, line two, and other government agencies to build. I would strike city that is more livable and just put in other government agencies to build a livable city or livable community that is vibrant, healthy, and safe. So you get rid of the more, more livable, just build a livable city that is vibrant, healthy, and safe.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Okay. On the next page, seven, the transportation pieces around sidewalks. It's a lot of prioritizing. It doesn't seem very strong to me. I think we should develop a, instead of identifying funding opportunities, we may actually have to develop a mechanism to fund sidewalks that is equitable across the city and not like look for CDPG money or look for grants for places, but actually develop a mechanism, whether that be a lighting and landscaping assessment district or some kind of a build-back-to-homeowners or, you know.
And what was in there that I had deleted was over here in the box about potentially paid for by special assessment.
Right.
Because I didn't know what it was going to be. I thought it was just important to look at doing it, funding to be determined.
Right. I think we should commit to developing a mechanism to fund the sidewalks. Regardless of what that is, we should set it out. People want to know what it is we're going to do. And, and I don't think we're going to be very successful looking for a lot of grant dollars unless we're suddenly going to redirect all of our CDPG dollars to building sidewalks. We should decide how we're going to incorporate it into our budget. Or if we're going to put it up on the homeowners as a special assessment, or if we're going to just put it up on a homeowner, we could require people to build sidewalks. I'm not suggesting that solution, but it's, you know, it's, there are different things you could do, and I think we need to commit to on whatever it is.
So we should come up with language that basically says, "We'll, we want to promote sidewalk. We want to expand sidewalks, and we'll look at the ways to fund that." Just some similar.
No, I think we should commit to developing, to determining what the funding mechanism's going to be from a city's perspective, regardless of whether or not we get grant funds.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Okay. That's all I have.
And Doug?
Yes, just a few general points, comments. One is, you know, thanks to all of the drafters of this and contributors of it, I think it's a great list of activities and priorities that any reasonable person would agree are important to do. I like very much the executive summary. I think it gives due credit to the excellent work that the city has been doing for decades, but at the same time correctly points out that there's always more work to be done. In a way, the plan itself seems like a hybrid. It's both strategic and tactical in its scope, reflecting, I think, the different interests of the council. And that's both appropriate, but at the same time, it does raise kind of a conundrum, which is that there are some 43 priorities, as I added them up, which, you know, most of them seem like they're at least going to affect the first year of the plan itself. And the concern that I have, and I've expressed it before, is this seems like a lot of priorities that ultimately are going to fall on the shoulders of about six of the managers that we have presently. But there's a way forward out of this conundrum, and I think it is to treat the plan like a living document. And that is that there has to be a lot of interplay over the course of the life of the document between the council, between the city manager, and the city staff, particularly those who will bear the lion's share of the work that's involved in carrying out these myriad priorities. And it may be that, you know, we'll have to come up with some new strategies which aren't listed in the document itself for facilitating and enriching this communication. And we should think about what those are going to be. One certainly could be the quarterly city manager's report, which is now traditional. It could be focused on the performance of the city staff up to that point. And instead of giving it in the usual 15 or 20-minute summary, we might even take the entire evening and just focus on how we're doing up to that point. Of course, it would be important to take into account that we're now starting this around the beginning of the second quarter of the year. So, we'll have three quarters remaining in which to do however much of this work we will be able to accomplish in that time. The last comment is, is that I noticed in the chart, communications as a distinct area is not given a whole lot of focus, putting that off to two or three years. Maybe it was inadvertent or in talking about, you know, some major changes to the communications function, which of course could not be done in the next eight months or so and would have to wait for another time. But I'd like to emphasize the importance of communications generally, reminding my colleagues that some of the most difficult situations we have faced, at least over the last five years since I've been on the council, have been when we have communicated poorly with the public about what we were trying to do and the direction in which we were going to lead the city. So I would, I would encourage all of us to make sure that in our expectations for the next eight months and beyond, that the communications function takes front and center in the things that we want to achieve and we want our city managers to be able to carry out. And then, I guess this is the final observation, and that is in the recreation category, where we have spent a particular, particularly large period of time and a lot of energy in the past months discussing it. It does seem like the priorities do not necessarily match up with the assumptions and the priorities themselves. I think that there is sort of a mix of very general things that we would like the rec department to do and some very specific things that we would want them to do. And in carrying out our wishes, and again, referring to this dialogue, this living document that I spoke of before, we will need Barb and her staff to continually come back to us, asking for clarification. What did we mean by this? Is what we propose, we, the staff, propose to do in response to the priority area and the assumptions and the activities, what you really want us to do? And I would not ask for any more specificity than already is there now. I think it's more than adequate. But I would put the onus on the city manager on an ongoing basis to make sure that the staff understands what we're trying to get to, what the intent is for all of these things where it's not spelled out in very concrete terms.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to just take a quick second and thank my colleagues on the council for taking this on as a challenge. I think, I think this is a great document. I think a lot of, I know a lot of energy and time put into putting this together, and I really thank all of you for the work you've done. I think this is far better than any of us could have done on our own. I just have a couple of minor things that I would like to see changed in here, and I'm using the infamous Ruben markup. If I look at page, I'm having trouble finding a page number. It's page six of 13. At the very bottom, number nine, under strategies. In the first line, ice truck counties. It says, "Coordinate with county, local county schools." I think local schools is sufficient because they know that we have some schools that are not counties, such as the Don Bosco-Cristo Rey School. And I think it's important to include those in our planning processes. I'd also like to suggest that the beginning of that be changed to say that the, we should enhance coordination between the city recreation, police, and local schools. And then the rest of it remain the same, same, because I think it's important that we do also see the coordination between the two city departments. At the same time, we're seeing the coordination with these schools. And I can send these markups to the city clerk. On the next page, at the very top, under number one A, it says, "Using a variety of policing methods to fight crime, including," and it lists three specific things. The way it's written, it makes those requirements. And I would like to change "including" to "such as," because I don't think the policy council should be giving that level of direction. And then, on the same page, under number two, the letter C, this is talking about the recreation department and saying that we would like, it says, "Achieving a balanced participation from each ward." I would like to extend that to say, "And achieving a similar mix in 10% of the individual programs." Because it's, I think the diversity between wards is good, but I would also like to see that within some of the individual programs, too.
Terry, just seeing, I think the way, when I wrote this, I tried to deal with that by putting that specific thing as a key indicator. So if you look on page eight, I would number eight. Just in trying to make this parallel, I tried to.
That's fine.
That's not like a key indicator, so I tried to put it in there.
Okay. Then I withdraw that request, and then I will send the other ones to the city clerk. And again, I, that's an example of where us working together as a collegial team has been so valuable in preparing this document. I really thank everyone for their work on this.
Ruben?
Yes. Perhaps I'm jumping ahead, but I'm giving the hour. I'm going to jump ahead. I think the next steps are to make the changes that we've talked about here in the next day or so, next few days, and get those to the city manager. And I would ask the city manager and her staff to do two basic things. One is, of course, to give us a review and comment on the, on the plan. And the second is to work a bit on what I call phasing, which is somewhat similar to the Gantt chart in the back. The Gantt chart in the back doesn't include all the projects. It's only a portion of them. And what I would like, in addition to the phasing, a little bit of information on resource requirements. Some of these are, will require money, some will require time, some will require staff, some will require all three. And I'd like to have just a sense from the city on what these things, what these things will require. And I mean this in a very general fashion, you know, low, medium, high is kind of fine. I'm not looking for, you know, this will be $53.28 per hour, you know, nothing like that. This is just a general sense. Because at some point, we will have to actually say, "Okay, so in year one of the plan, we're going to do this, and year two, we're going to do that." And we'll have to mix and match and make the dollar totals, you know, bottom and so on. And what would be helpful is knowing this kind of research thing, uh, resource things for them.
Josh?
Well, I thank everyone for all their comments and the openness with which people have listened to each other, and I think the plan is, will be better for that. You know, I think this is some of the most important work we can do, because I think that this is really what we're responsible for as the council, is setting the very high level of strategic direction and policy for the city. And I know that that, it's very challenging to get it right at the right level, not too detailed, but, but meaningful still to give direction. And, you know, I think it's incredibly important that we set a realistic but aggressive plan for the for the next five years for the city. I had a couple, one question that I had in my own mind is we make an assumption in here that the city is diverse but not integrated. And that's one of our assumptions. But it wasn't clear to me, and I know Bruce and I both struggled with this fact, that we don't actually have any specific priority to sort of address that. But I know it is something that, that is on many of our minds. And when I talked to the previous mayor, she actually thinks it's one of the critical issues that's going to be facing the city in the coming years, sort of having that, that Tacoma Park community as a whole. And so I might just challenge us all to think about what we might, I, I don't have a silver bullet for that. It's sort of a problem that communities in this country really base, base to a degree, degree. So, but I think that, that's on my mind, is do we have an answer for that? Another, a question I wanted to try and answer was that, and my thing about drafting the plan, to Doug's point, that we weren't trying to actually come up with forty-two priorities, but I think when Bruce and I left, there was twelve or thirteen, and now Ruben may have added a few more, so maybe it's around fifteen. And then under there, there's these sub-points. And my thought was that those sub-points were, as Terry did a very good job describing, not mandatory, but sort of recommendations or ideas for how to achieve that higher goal. We don't end up with forty-two discrete goals, but maybe ten to fifteen that we're trying to accomplish in a long, five-year timeframe. And then to Ruben's very good point, that we need to phase those and expand on the Gantt chart idea, so that maybe we'll only have focus of resources on a handful of time. So I don't know if people agree with that general concept, that those sub-points, that those, I think there are As and B, there are the alphabet as opposed to the, the numbers, that those are more illustrative and, and recommendations on how to achieve the ultimate priority. And that really, we're even looking for the city staff to say, no, you shouldn't, we shouldn't do that specifically, instead we should do this, and we'll go, we'll go carry that out. So I think we, it sounds like I see heads nodding on that, but Terry has a.
Yeah, I'm hesitant to agree to something before I've reviewed it.
Right. But in concept, the concept.
It sounds good, but.
And then lastly, Doug, I didn't, on communications, when I drafted the, that, that thing, I was trying to put out what I thought was the general feel of the, the council, and I think we can definitely adjust that. I think we should just remind ourselves of the whack-a-mole game, which is that when we push down, you know, if we're going to push something forward, we should be realistic and, and to what you've said many, many times is, we got to have fewer, we got to have fewer. So particularly in the short term. So if we're going to, if we're going to push something forward, we should just remember we should pull something else back.
Can we do whack-a-mole sound effects?
Um, Dan.
I also think, I didn't have too much hand in, in putting this document together, so I, I'm especially appreciative of all your good works in getting this together. And like, like Doug, I, the, the don't overreach thing comes to mind. But I have a story about planning, some of you heard it before, that Eisenhower was the chief planner before D-Day, and he made a very extensive document, he and his staff made a very extensive document about exactly where they were going to go and what they were going to invade and what they were going to, what the germ, where the Germans would be in every detail. It took, there were yards of plans, as I understand it. And then, of course, that was, those documents were rarely referred to once the thing got going, because everything changed as it would in, in that extreme situation. And let's hope that we don't have that kind of an extreme situation here, that where we can roll with the, with the punches a little better as we go ahead. But there, there may well be punches over the next five years. We don't know how things will, will really play out. But I think we have some insurance, and, and that is that we continue to keep the collaborative approach that we started with, both with staff and with the public. And there are, I'm very glad to see that there are a number of specific pragmatic suggestions in here that involve the public, like the notion of a CDC or working with the city lot to, and to make that, make something happen there that makes the junction a more vibrant place. And, and the creation of various of the plans, the public can clearly be involved in those kinds of efforts. So on that note, I'll just thank you all again for working so hard on this.
Ruben, Doug, see.
I did have a, I did have a, a thought on the residential thing. I, I do think that there's research on how to get different groups together. And it's kind of, I call it the grandmother test, and your grandmother would say, yeah, well, that's so obvious, why didn't you just do it? It's basically when people work together on common things, then the differences between them, whether it's age or income or ethnicity or some other difference, fade away once they've been working on some common stuff. So my, one of the, one of the priorities I added was, one that Terry, Colleen and I had, was how to, how to spend some city effort on getting new people involved. And whether that would be new community groups, whether it would be some other activity. But to me, that, that's how you would deal with, with this very difficult to work on issue. Because you get people, I mean, I have a great admiration for Terry, who's done a tremendous amount of community organizing in his ward, and it's brought a lot of diverse people together.
Terry.
Well, of course, we have to speak after that, I thank you for your compliment. But I just wanted to say that, you know, this is, we're ready to enter the next phase, I think we're very close to entering the next phase, which is to have a staff review of this document. So I'm sure there's going to be some changes and modifications we're going to want to make before this becomes final. But I think we're at this juncture interested in not just hearing from staff, but also to start to get feedback from the community. Because as council member Wright said, this is probably one of, if not the most important thing we're doing, because it is part of the most important thing we do, which is the budget. And this is really, in a way, giving some direction to how we want to spend our money, some planning for that, so that we're in a better position when it comes to budget time. So it's important for the community to, to now also review this draft and, and start giving feedback to your respective representatives.
Remembering that when we talk about it being final, final at a point in time, and then we just keep reviewing it, as we've talked about as a living document.
Excellent point.
It might be interesting, once we get it to the staff review, and what we would consider final, where we'd be ready to vote on it, is to use one of council member Robinson's suggestions, which is to maybe go around the city and have some roundtables where we actually have some more meaningful discussions with people from the ward about it.
Boy, after all this backslapping tonight, I can just hear Granola Park.
Yeah, right. Why would he say?
And, and I'll, and since Ruben brought up the grandmother test, I'll, I'll give you my grandmother's test for if you're going to say something, is it kind, is it true, is it necessary? Then you can. Any other comments? City manager, have any?
I have one sort of next step thing. What I'll do is I'll send my, my draft, so that's the one with R on it, so that you'll have that one to.
In Word perfect form, is it?
No, I'll, I'll send it in Word. I know.
We're with all, all the changes accepted.
Well, that's the question, do we want to do that with all the changes?
Yes.
So that'll take a day or two extra.
Huh?
Because I have to make, Colleen and I have some changes to make.
And there, and there was going to be a committee of three, you two and Josh, on the language on the housing stuff.
Right.
So whatever you put in there has to pass muster with you three.
Right. So basically, it's a couple of days, and then we'll send it to you. Can I ask one more question to potentially get resolution on? I mean, first would be if, if Barb wants this, but do we agree that those five things we have in the executive summary are the, the things that the city staff should be focusing on right now? Or do you need that, Barb? Is that helpful? Or do you feel like?
You know, I think certainly the more, you know, input and guidance we can get from the council before this is going to the management team for review, that's certainly helpful. I don't know that, given the lateness of the hour, you necessarily have to do it this evening, but.
I was actually thinking of this plan as rolling in, in the, in some sense, in the next year or so. Not that we would start like December first doing it, because that's a, that's a really high bar.
No, I was just trying to be sensitive to, when we started this whole process, it was really about council priorities, which was more about giving our, for the term of this council, sort of what the priorities are. And we're now halfway through that term. So maybe we just say, whatever, you know, let's, let's focus on the strategy of strategic plan for a longer timeframe now. Or can we do both functions, which is, you know, give, give the city staff some more immediate sense of what the priorities are for the remaining time, and then, and then try and finish up this longer term.
Yeah. I don't know, just, I guess, speaking for myself, if I necessarily feel strongly whether the council lists five immediate areas of focus. I think the, kind of the Gantt chart concept at the back probably overall is really what I'm looking towards to kind of seek. It's these cross-departmental lines. I think my concern would be if you start having something where one department just has ten tasks assigned to them, I think that's a much different problem for me to resolve. So I, I don't really feel that strongly about whether you include this or not. It's, it's more what you, where you want resources going and what period of time.
And, and did you have any other comments that you need to make, anything else that we need to give you so that you can take the next step and place back feedback?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I think council member Snipper talked about kind of what kind of resources are needed, which I, I appreciate that. I guess my sense is you're looking for staff feedback just kind of generally across the document. Is that a fair characterization? Okay.
And I think also Mr. Snipper had a request for maybe some level of measurement of impact on implementing it, am I correct?
Well, we'll eventually get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, some of that, I think, the staff has already started discussing, because certainly, you know, we're, we're sensitive to where there might be particularly financial costs that the council needs to be aware of.
Okay. We're charged.